So, good morning. It is Monday, October 24th, 8:30. And we are going to start this beautiful Monday morning with a public hearing. And we look to our Director of Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice.
Thank you. This public hearing is being held to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city zoning bylaw. Bylaw number 4124 rezones the property located at 721 Highway #2 from C2 Commercial General to C3 Commercial Highway Zone. The property is currently vacant and the applicant wishes to rezone the property to construct a tire repair and replacement facility. And there have been no written comments regarding this amendment.
Thank you. So then we look to the gallery then for comments. Calling a second time, calling a third time, and seeing none, we will close our public hearing. And with that, we will move into our regular meeting of council, call that to order. Look around the room. We'll start with you in council business, possibly to my left with Council Ballack. Good morning. Catch you off-guard there?
You did. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Okay. It's been very busy, but sitting here thinking about it, I've had a hard time going back. I did attend the concert on Saturday night of Dr. Warnock returning to Dawson Creek and Katja the cellist in the sanctuary at the Anglican Church. It was sold out and to great acclaim, and the organ and shallow combination are incredible. So, it did remind me of a time in Dawson Creek when we had a lot of classical music and a concert series and the number of people who do enjoy that. So, I think I'll be going to the arts community, wondering if we can revive that. I would like to encourage people to stop by the Europa Cafe. The art gallery is having their fundraiser with the auction of paintings and artwork there. And we could do with some bids. You can get a really, I guess there's no one to talk to here, but people in here, you could get a really good deal. The bids need to be pushed up. And on Friday, the opening or the event and the gala is happening, so you could pick up your painting then and get to see everyone. I had a question for staff or anyone who knows. The walking trail to the east of Brookside Cemetery is still blocked off, and I was wondering what the schedule for reopening that was.
So, we'll look to Jim then?
Yes, through your worship, we've had the engineer look at that trail and, well, actually look at all the flood damage. And their opinion is that we can't repair that trail in its current location. And so, we are negotiating with the owners of the property above it, which does show construction for a right of way to relocate the path to higher ground. The recommendations of the engineer is that we plant willows and other growth where the path is now to stabilize the bank, and we move the path to the top.
And, thank you. Just one further on that then. Is the Rotary Club involved in the repair of that, or is that a city?
Through your worship, it will be the city, and it's potentially recoverable from the emergency program because of its flood damage.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else then, councillor? No? Councillor Kenny? Anything for this morning?
I attended the airport sustainability consultation, and that was very interesting and a lot of good comments, a lot of good input from the public. And I was impressed with the consultants themselves, who had a lot of experience and background. And I think we're going to come up with a pretty good report. Also, been working on Small Business Month. This is Small Business Month, the month of October. And we're bringing in Teresa Pippas with Community Futures to deliver the workshop fish philosophy. And it's about a business in Seattle, a fish market in Seattle, and how they created this, well, customer service went from pennies to...
Riches.
Riches, yeah. And so, we're bringing it to Dawson Creek. And it's going to be at the Best Western on Wednesday night. And you can purchase tickets with the Dawson Creek Chamber of Commerce.
It's amazing session and story. I've been to it a few times.
Yeah.
Really, it's worthwhile to go to if you haven't been.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I attended the coal forum in Tumbler Ridge with Sue. And lots of good news coming out of that community with that industry. They're really looking at expansion, so that's good news for them and I guess for us too, considering, you know, we're kind of a hub that Tumbler Ridge comes to. I attended the airport sustainability planning, the open house, and again, was impressed to see so many people coming out and some really good things come of that, I think. The Arts Society board meeting I attended, and happy to say that even though they did receive quite a large cut in their gaming funds as well, that they're still able to, you know, provide the teachers for the student classes and things like that. So, they're still keeping their heads above water even without the funding. I attended the Community Sports Heroes Awards and like to congratulate Christina Ward's, Don Borassa...
Borassa.
Borassa, sorry. Andy Kazioke, Ted Shields, and Connie Patterson for all the work and volunteer and things that they've done for their different sports over the years. I also attended the Small Business Week celebration at the Lakeview Credit Union. So, it's been really busy this weekend. You might notice my voice is a little off. We had Octopia Fest at the K-Pak and was a rip rowing party Friday night and Saturday night. So, lots of things going on. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Councillor McFadden?
Morning, your worship.
Good morning.
In addition to those things that have already been talked about, I think the highlight was the announcement of the opening of a medical clinic and a new drugstore in the Quop, in the Quop store in downtown Dawson Creek. Going to be a walk-in clinic, seven days a week, 12 hours a day, they plan to run it, so it'll be a much-needed service to the community. And then, I think that's the highlights, your worship.
Good. No, all good highlights, exactly. Thank you. So, on that, we'll move to minutes. We have 3-1 and 3-2, which are the public hearing and regular meeting minutes from October 3rd for adoption. Councillor McFadden, Councillor Schuman, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? Any business arising from council on either of those? Okay. So, seeing none, we'll move to correspondence. We have 5-1, which is a letter from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. This is our membership invoice for the 12-13 year. Councillor Schuman?
I would move that we pay our membership.
Okay. And seconded by Councillor Kenny. And was there a question? Comments? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 5-2 is a letter from Dawson Creek Senior Canucks, and this is a support, a letter of support for the team that they're looking for. And just as you noticed, on the bottom there, we did already this year make a bronze donation to the group, which we had some advertising for them. So, Councillor Kenny?
I move that we sponsor the same as we did the previous year. That's, they're talking, the bronze was the previous?
We already did do a bronze just two weeks ago.
Oh, for the 150?
Yeah. Two weeks ago when they came in, I know we did do the bronze, and I think they're asking for more. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the bronze is the mayor's message that goes in the program?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, well...
So, maybe to Shelley, have we sponsored this aside from the bronze in the past? Have we done anything that you're aware of? I don't think we have.
Not that I'm aware of, your worship.
Okay.
Can we?
It's council's decision. Councillor McFadden?
I'm wondering if this couldn't be, put over to the budget consultations. I don't know that we've ever really supported them other than $100 here or there. They have been around for a long, 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 long time, and I think it is deserving of just more than a sort of a passing comment. I think it needs to go to the budget consultation, budget input for next year.
Well, that takes them to next year.
Yeah. Councillor Schuman, are you seconding that?
No.
Okay. Does somebody want to second that motion, or? Okay. No seconder? So, it's a dead motion, so continue looking to council then for a motion. Councillor Schuman?
Through you to Shelley. Do they ever apply for our grants? Do they ever go through the grant process and put in for a grant, like?
Through your worship, over the last four years since we changed the policy, I don't believe they have applied through the grants program.
So, that is an option. We have already sponsored it to 150, so council has the option to either sponsor more or to ask, to refer, to tell them to refer to the grants process for next year. It's your choice. Okay. Councillor Ballack?
Thank you, worship. I think that is precisely why we put the grant policy in, and that, you know, we have a lot of long-serving clubs like that that I would hate to lose. But I think the development of the grant policy was exactly about that, is we cannot be bailing, bailing the clubs out. Taxpayers just can't afford that anymore, and that we needed to have a process. So, I could see them going through that process or approaching us during budget planning time. I mean, these are people who are very familiar with how the city works and in contact with our staff. So, I'm of two minds, because I think that truly, you know, to be sustainable and have the long-term planning, we need to follow those processes. And am I right? They do still get a preferable rate on ice time, and is that true?
I know they do apply sometimes. Jim?
Through your worship, I wouldn't call it a preferable rate. It is the rate for games. It applies to themselves and the junior Canucks. Actually, no, I'm sorry, they're an adult rate, the junior Canucks, or a minor rate, but they haven't got any special exemption. In the past, they've applied for special exemptions for playoff games, which have been granted.
Aye.
Of course, you have an ongoing beer garden license you've issued for their games.
Yeah.
But in terms of sponsorship or direct grant, I don't believe we've ever done that for them or the junior Canucks.
Because that's what I wondered, if perhaps staff could work directly with them to see what sort of rink rental or thing would help them survive until this could be done due process, or if they can strictly survive this, would they plan for next with us?
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to do that, because we can't give, we're putting it back to staff.
Preferential treatment.
Not only the preferential treatment, it's the fact that staff doesn't have the ability to waive policy. And our policy states this is how much the fees and charges are, so they would have to come to us, which is what they're doing now, asking for either some monetary assistance or what have you. So, the option is, like I said, you can either, council can either put a motion to sponsor it, or we can give them the package.
I would move then that we leave our sponsorship at the bronze level and, you know, are open to entertain any, I'm sorry, what to call that?
Sponsorship? Or, sorry, the grants?
Not the grants, the, when you, they have a special occasion, you buy the banner and stuff. Oh, I've lost my terminology. You know, that we could entertain special events promotion over the winter.
If they have a tournament or something like that, you mean?
Yeah, banners.
Yeah, but they would have to apply to us for that then. So, for now, you're saying leave it at the 150?
Yeah. I would leave our sponsorship at where it is and look at special opportunities over the winter when they're having their events.
Okay. So, is there a seconder for that?
Oh, seconder.
Councillor Kenny? Any discussion now that we have a motion on the floor?
Well, that was committee of the whole.
There you go.
It was. That's what it's called.
Okay. So, all those in favor then? Opposed? Councillor McFadden, and it's passed. 5-3 is a letter from the B.C. Community Living Action Group, and this is for Housing for Adults with Developmental Disabilities Resolution that they're looking for. Councillor Schuman?
I would move that we pass a resolution and send it on as they're requesting. I think that we need to support the community living groups in our communities. And, I mean, it's just a letter, you know, showing that we do support that, and so I would make that motion.
Okay. Seconded by Councillor Kenny. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 5-4 is a letter from Santa Rose Bone and Grindel, and this is our auditing standards report.
For information.
Okay. For information. Seconded by Councillor Schuman. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And 5-5 is a letter from Peace River Regional District, and this is for our Waste Reduction Recycling Strategy Workshop, which will be held on November 4th. And they're looking for a couple of names to be submitted for. Councillor Ballack?
I move that we do send staff, appropriate staff and representation from council, and I would volunteer to go do that.
Okay. So, Councillor Ballack is putting her name forward, nominating herself.
I'm nominating myself to go to this garbage meeting.
And then, two staff members, which we'll leave up to Jim to decide. Okay. A secondary is Councillor Schuman. Anybody want to jump in front of Marilyn and volunteer themselves?
I think I'm busy that day, or otherwise I would be all over it.
I continue to have a strong interest in waste in the region. I'll be interested to see where they've gone with that.
So, a question, Councillor Kenny?
No, I'll put my name forward as well. Is that what you're looking for?
I don't think there's any wrong with two of us going there.
I don't see, I think they're saying up, you know, they're saying they want at least three. I don't think if there's more...
Oh, I thought you were looking for more people.
No, and that's fine, but if you want to attend, I can, we'll just have to submit the names so they just know who's coming. I think, I would say the more interest, the better.
I was going to say, if we all wanted to go, I don't think they'd turn us away.
Exactly.
Okay. So, we have two councillors for now, and then we'll leave it with Jim to appoint a few staff. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Moves us into delegations, but we have some time, so we're going to move on to reports, which is 7-1 is the first report, and that's 11-178 from the Chief Administrative Officer, and this is regarding our library sustainability plan. Councillor Ballack?
I'd like to move the recommendation from the Chief Administrative, from the Chief Administrative Officer, R.E., the library sustainability plan, that it's received, and further that council hold one or more joint meetings with the library board to discuss the future of the library and its facility. Further, that council and library jointly arrange public import opportunities to hear the perspectives of the library users and other citizens around facility options. Finally, that through this process, council make a designation regarding which of the three facility options we will endorse.
Okay. Seconded by Councillor Schuman. Any questions from council? Councillor Ballack?
Thank you, worship. I would just like to thank the library staff and Board of Directors, who are sitting here, for the good work done, and for Jennifer Fox being able to lead this in such a strong manner that we haven't had to get consultation to do that. And point out further that with the growth that's shown in the backgrounders to this, that library staff also is being impacted quite heavily between doing outreach programs that they do with success by six in the school system, and a stronger teen programming, and this increased use of the library. And so, that I would like to see a process similar to what we've done with the Arts Center and the Art Gallery and stuff, where we look at a sustainability plan in that way, through discussion with our community, information sessions and feedback. It's just, I think the options put forward to us by our staff are wonderful on that behalf, so.
Yeah. And I want to thank staff too, because, you know, as a part of our strategic priorities, we looked at this, and one of the options was bringing in a consultant. But after looking through this and talking with the library board and staff, it came apparent very quickly that at this point, we didn't see why we would spend the finances to bring in a consultant to tell us what we feel we might already know here. And I think the public outreach is will be the important portion. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the essential difference between this process and the airport sustainability process is the airport sustainability process has had the focus on how we can grow usage, because usage is not at a very high level there, and we need to grow it. It's the reverse problem with the library. The usage is extraordinarily high, and it's growing every day.
And on that note, I would like to point out for anyone who doesn't know, that we actually have more library patrons by counting the cards that we have than we have population of Dawson Creek and immediate area. So, we have, you know, over 14,000 users, so, and heavy, heavy program use, so unusual in town.
Well, but the assumption there is there's a lot of people on the peripheral and the rural areas that utilize the library, which is good to see as well. It's not just the citizens of Dawson Creek.
There are, but also, there are a lot in that area, but also, you know, it does indicate that almost every single person in Dawson Creek or every family does use the library, which is great. So, I think we do need to involve the regional district as much as possible, but we need to look at the future of this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Moves us to 7-2, and that's Report 11-025 from the Recreation Facilities Manager, and this is regarding leased space at the Memorial Arena. Councillor McFadden?
I'll move the recommendation, your worship.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Kenny. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And 7-3 is Report 11-024 from the Parks Manager, and this is regarding the cemetery bylaw, and this is for memorial markers. This one here, maybe before a motion, I'll just give everybody some information after looking into this. So, they're asking for a policy exemption on this one here, which of course, staff is unable to grant. That's why it's here in front of council. This one here, if you look at the photos, is right in a corner section. The reason why we have the policy where you can't have the stand-up ones out in the middle is because when parks staff have to go out there to dig a plot out, there can be damage or they can be in the way when they're digging. This one here, looking at it, I don't think there's going to be an issue at all, because it's off in the corner and won't be in the way of any digging. So, I'm pretty sure if council looks at that, there's probably no reason why in this situation we couldn't waive the policy because of the location, so. Councillor Schuman?
So, I would move that we waive that policy, the recommendation.
And seconded by Councillor Kenny. And then, are there questions?
Just for clarification, because of the recommendation, the recommendation is to lay the stone flat.
Yes.
And I couldn't see that both parties had come to a decision about that, and...
Well, what I can say though is the recommendation from staff will have to be that, because staff cannot...
Because that's process.
Because that's process policy, and staff can't waive policy, only we can.
Okay.
So, which is why they make the recommendation they did.
Okay.
So, not that we like to argue with staff, but we will be arguing on this one.
Yeah. That's, yeah. I move that we waive the recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Waive the policy.
Exactly. Which is why it's in front of us, so. Okay. Any other comments then? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 7-4, it's Report 11-176 from the Executive Assistant. This is regarding Dawson Creek Municipal Library Board Positions. Now, I'll go to Councillor Ballack.
I move the recommendation, we talked about this at the last board meeting, and everyone is very happy to have Mr. Garth Maitland back on the board.
Excellent. Seconded by Councillor Kenny. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 7-5 is Report 11-185 from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is our 2011 Consolidated Budget Variance Report. What should bring forward? Councillor Ballack?
I'll move for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Schuman. See you nodding. Any questions for Shelley? On this time? Okay. Good. Thank you then. So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Moves us to 7-6, and this is from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, Report 11-122, and this is regarding S.N. Carlson Trucking Bulk Water Connection Agreement. Councillor McFadden?
Thank you, your worship. I'll move the recommendation that Carlson Trucking Limited be given a renewal of the bulk rate for an additional two years, and with an option to renew it for another two years in 2013 with the approval of council.
Okay. Thank you. And seconded by Councillor Kenny, oh, sorry, and Councillor Ballack, you have a question?
Thank you, your worship. Just, I guess clarification, a bit of a concern looking into the future of the overall use of water, not this particular application, which I think just brings it in line with other users. In Kevin's report later on, the amount of affluent flow into the, into the new facility looks like it would be adequate to cover a percentage of all of these if it was, you know, sold between Shell and them, the agreement we have. And so, I'm just wondering if in two years and once we have the data, if we would look at a split between a cap on these water uses and what the affluent supply can give, because it looked like if you had a month's at 5 million per day, you'd be able to cover a little bit more of this over and above what Shell had. And how, before we start selling that to extra users, if we would divide that usage up between people who have their own stem, especially for the potable water stems, this is a nice one, because it's raw water at least. So, I'm just looking at the future of that, and maybe we can talk about it in committee of the whole, is that we have some process built in to see what the overall supply is in two years at the renewal point, which I guess is sort of common sense. But I think it might change a fair amount in equalizing the playing field for everyone.
Okay. Jim?
Through your worship, as you know, council's direction is that we will not cut anyone off of potable or raw water for industrial use until we have developed an alternative for them, exclusive of water shortage. Everyone was cut off last year in the water shortage. It appears to us that the usage numbers right now, that for the period of time that Shell, the agreement covers Shell taking 4,500 a day, that there won't be sufficient alternative for the folks who are connected to either potable or raw water directly.
Not for all of them.
But there will be enough product to cover off those who are currently going to our water hauling stations. Now, that will be reviewed every year. The usage in the industry is projected to increase, but that depends on drilling activity. So, for the moment, that's what it looks like, but we'll review it actually every year to see if there is, if that reclaimed station is a viable alternative for others. We're not seeing it at the moment, but, you know, the oil patch makes their decisions based on market forces, so that can go up or down.
Yeah.
So, it looks like we can divert the users that are, the extra users that are using the potable water now over to the affluent pretty well?
Right now, there is going to be enough product to shift all of those who are going to the water fill stations to the truck fill station that we'll be building at the reclamation point.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, any comments? Okay. So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And with that, we're going to take about a two-minute recess and then get into delegations here at 9 o'clock. So, just recess for two minutes.
Back to delegations, eh?
Well, yeah, yeah, we do, we do.
Well, I obviously didn't read that recommendation very closely.
Which one?
The cemetery one. I'm like, all four, oh yeah, let's waive it, but then I moved the recommendations.
I don't think that reflects actually the principle, too. My understanding is that somebody bought a double plot. And they put up a mark.
They bought it, and then they came to us and tasked with to put it in a section. No, no, this is in the section, but it's the usual thing. A deceased individual bought their own plot, then the family wanted to put the headstone. So we have to recommend against them, because your policy is not. However, the reasons for your policy don't actually cover this location. In that location, you can have it without it impacting anyone else. So we would say let down, because that's what we made everybody else. But there's no reason to make them let down, it's just what the policy says. Almost six feet.
Wow.
No, because of your decision or not, but normally we would say yeah. There will be a waste of eighty-seven-five hundred bucks that can't be made.
We're not making them lay it down, we said they could lay it up.
The point is, in the section they're in, we don't have a place like it's grave by grave. So to get a backhoe in and make, the backhoe's going to be able to extend over. Not good. So in that section, we don't allow the uprights for that reason. However, there, right, there's two roadways, and the backhoe can locate itself on the roadway. If it needs to dig, so it's not a problem in that location, and it wouldn't be in the corner that's directly across. Anywhere inside, it would be a huge issue.
Yeah, it's all okay.
Just another recommendation from staff goes by.
We do not do very many of those. Um, tomorrow I gotta do something with voice FM.
It's not by one video. What time, what day are you going there?
I don't know if I can go tomorrow.
I gotta take my phone down.
Thought about air conditioning.
I noticed that.
So we'll look at calling the meeting back to order here. It's a little bit more than two minutes, I apologize.
Where are we at?
We're up. Delegations. So welcome back then, we're at delegation six one. I've got the first proclamation here that I wish to read out today, and then we'll be inviting up Ms. Jenny Snyder from the library. And I apologize, I forgot my glasses at home, so. So whereas the city of Dawson Creek acknowledges the importance of reading in our community, and whereas the public library works to improve and promote the reading, writing, and other literacy skills of all Dawson Creek residents, and whereas the public library recognizes our strong writing community, and whereas the public library works to encourage our local literacy community, now therefore I do hereby proclaim October twenty-seventh as Reading Day in Dawson Creek. And Jenny, I invite you to come forward.
Thank you.
I'll give you a few minutes if you have anything you want to highlight. Oh, you guys are rolling right along, sorry, Mike will be on chair of the board since the library. We were talking to Marilyn at break, and if things aren't broken, fix it, so. Thanks for all the support. We looked at some numbers here recently, and as part of the planning process, library patrons are outstripping population to the tune of one point five to one. We projected out to two thousand sixteen, we should be just shy of twenty thousand carters by then. So it's actually, the spread is increasing at an exponential rate. Now whether it's out of town people, whether it's transient, whether it's tourists, Jenny says you see a lot of people who work or people that live in hotels checking their emails, that sort of stuff. So quite well, we're happy.
And it's a nice coincidence then to be doing this today at the same time we bring forward a policy where we're going to be looking forward to sustainability plan for the library.
Absolutely.
It's a good time to leave.
Absolutely.
I know, I just want to say a personal thank you, and all counsel, all Jim, and all of your hard work. And kudos to great things we hear out of the community about our library, and a lot to do with you and the staff, and so a big thank you, please pass that on to them as well.
Thank you, we appreciate that. I'm just going to challenge everyone on Thursday to read for at least ten minutes, read as long as you can, but for at least ten minutes. Phone the library, email, you're all reading all day, I know that. Calling, we're going to see how many people. Last time we did this was about ten years ago, we had an amazing response. So everybody get reading, phone in, and we can...
Email pictures, your cell phone.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we have lots happening at the library this month, Canadian Library Month, in support of Slave Lake Library, whose library burnt down in the fires in the spring of this year. We just held a silent auction of books there, we'll be sending off a nice check to them next week. And if we all go with the same thought, we just want everybody to read.
I've got a regional district meeting of three hundred and fifty pages, so it might be a bit more than ten minutes.
So now we have, next one is six two, I believe it's Brian McNeil and Hannah Embry. Hopefully I have the names correct, are here for the next proclamation. And this is for the Pride Day celebrations and proclamation. So whereas the city of Dawson Creek acknowledges the importance of inclusion and diversity within our community, and whereas gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgendered, transsexual, queer, and questioning community members all contribute to Dawson Creek, which is a place that we all call home, and whereas it is important to celebrate the diversity of the GLBTTQQ community, so now therefore I do hereby proclaim October twenty-ninth as Pride Day here in Dawson Creek. I'll sign that, and I just invite you to come forward.
Not again. I'm cursed, oh my God. I don't know what's going on, I'm sorry, just keep smiling, just keep smiling. I really, K-Math, you get happy.
Anything you want to highlight for both of you guys?
All right, well Friday night we have a decorating party and a movie showing at K-Pac. And then Saturday night we have our big Halloween party that we do every year, so we have the drag show and the dance.
Do you guys like taking place at K-Pac as well?
Doors open at seven, show starts at seven thirty, everybody's welcome, it's a great party. Funniest thing to do on Halloween.
Any questions, Your Worship, your council?
Thank you, Worship, well congratulations to you all for, I know it's great to have leaders in the community for children to model themselves and young people to model and feel like they belong to the community. And I'm so happy to see you step forward and keep things going. I'm wondering on a more organized level, is there an actual society that meets regularly or a group advocating in Dawson Creek?
Do you have a group that meets fairly regularly, at least once a month, and then it's still months, and then when we're organizing the events, it's once a week? Our goal is to try and create enough of a regular revenue stream that we could do more advocacy. We participated in the Anti-Hom- or the Day Against Homophobia at the high school.
Yes.
We have a very small and not very well-accessed library of books that are available to anybody who's looking for stuff, maybe I should have to think about that. And I think if there's other stuff, we do hold coffee houses occasionally.
Is there a contact number where people could find you, or?
On Facebook. So Dawson Creek Pride Society, Ellen, you can't please look us up?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, any other questions? Okay, well again, thanks for coming in, and good luck this weekend.
On that, we move to six three, I have Ms. Karen Weatherall in attendance. And Mr. Reagan, I believe, are you coming up at the same time, it looks like? Okay, and is she going to be your secretary when you're up too?
So I'll try and get this done quickly, I see you've got a large agenda today.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to leave copies here, so anybody who wants one can pick one up. My topic was today that I was just really saddened and really felt let down after our last meeting, and it was the response to the media, and it just didn't, it didn't come out really sounding right, and anyway, so I put this together, and I'll read it out. I titled it "The Honesty and Integrity of the People Who Step Up to the Plate to Make Decisions for the Residents of Dawson Creek." "The response to my letter at the last council meeting was more than dissatisfying. It was an insult to me and the rest of the residents in the mobile home park. I was very specific with my points on what the situation is there, and I don't have to repeat what it was. I referred to the acknowledgement letter that I received from City Hall and the television broadcast by the mayor on the six o'clock news, October third. The white elephant in this room," I will call it, because I too can use a play on words, "was referred to by our worship, the mayor, as many things. He stated, and I quote, 'Everyone is treated fairly in this system. It is unfortunate for those people down there that they didn't have a frontage, so they, when they see an increase in water rates, they didn't have any offset at all.'" His request, I think, referring to Mr. Reagan, is they don't want to have to pay so much for their water anymore, that they want a full reduction, so that we have to go to the rest of the people in Dawson Creek and ask if you are willing to pay, if you are willing for your water rates to go up so that this individual and the rest of the people in the trailer park don't have to pay so much. "This response to my facts in black and white is an absolute insult to all of us in the mobile home park. It actually sounds very condescending. The solution was nothing to do with water rates, and we do not, we are not requesting a decrease in our water rate. We pay and always have paid the same as the rest of the residents in Dawson Creek. Paying with words and avoiding the truth will not fix this problem. This was not only an insult to us residents of the mobile home parks, it really insults everybody in Dawson Creek to think that we can be led around by these kind of statements. The twisting around of words and truths will never solve a problem. I learned this as a young child myself. In the thank you letter for participating in the meeting, the white elephant appears again. This time, instead of referring to the white elephant as water rates, it is referred to as taxes. Quote, "The city is bound provincially as to what can be done with funds received from taxpayers, not showing favoritism to any one property owner. The property owner being our landlord charges us rent. The landowner pays property taxes to the city. Each resident living in the two parks also pays improvement taxes. For the owner, the total taxes paid for 2010 was $26,263. Total for 2011 was $27,498.70, including the frontage credit. Taxes paid by us, the tenants to the city for 2011, and this is a low estimate, were approximately $85,152. Then add in the $38,716 the white elephant charged, and the grand total is $151,366 paid to the city for 2011 from the residents. We do not dispute paying our taxes, we do not dispute paying for our water. We pay and always have paid the same water rates as all the residents of Dawson Creek. So let's get real and call a spade a spade. What is the white elephant really? Again, we have statements that are nothing but selectively pulling words out of context to mislead the thinking and understanding of the taxpayers of Dawson Creek. We are paying an infrastructure charge attached to our water sewer bill that we will not get any kind of a credit for. When all the residents did receive a credit, this is what now makes us pay more than the rest of the city. It is not equal as it was before. We need this problem rectified instead of being ignored. When replying to Doug Reagan's appeal, you said you thought Mr. Reagan was confused because you called the white elephant a tax. In your response to my appeal, you seem to be the one who is confused because you called the white elephant water rates. So out of all these words, what is the white elephant? That depends on what day it is and whom the audience may be. I want to see a solution, and pulling words out of context and spinning them around does not change the facts. The white elephant, of course, is the infrastructure charge, the two words that can refer to as something else over and over. Amazing, isn't it? Wordsella does not fix a thing. So that's my letter today, and I hope it makes it clear to what we were really asking for to begin with, because it seems to be mixed up with all kinds of other things like taxes and water bills, and it isn't, that's not what the problem is. It's the same thing as it was before, the infrastructure charge, it doesn't come out fair.
Yeah, if you leave the copies there, as you said, that would be fine, thank you, because that was fine. No comments from council? Mr. Reagan, you had something you wanted to do now?
I also do.
You said you had an ask of council, sir?
Sir?
You had an ask of us, you said?
What did he say? I'm not sure either.
You have something you wanted to present to council, you're asking us to do something?
Oh, yes. I have actually two documents here today. One is due diligence by my standards. The other one is a Constitution Act, Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which if I had with me the last council meeting, I would have showed it to you, okay? So that's my one document. I'll read this one, I have copies of it made, if you wish some at the end, I'll certainly give them to you. "The following points were taken from Urban Systems' Water Cost Study of the city of Dawson Creek, which was finalized in March 2008 and paid for by the taxpayers of our city. I have extracted highlights of this water cost study as follows to help you understand its contents. All financing and cost recovery strategies are built on a foundation of guiding principles. These guiding principles act as touchstones for decision-makers and help ensure that public policy reflects the community's values." Point three, point one. Municipal utilities commonly operate on cash method, where revenues are designed to recover the actual cash requirements forecast for a given test year. The cash method assumes the utility provides a principal repayment in lieu of a depreciation expense. The city of Dawson Creek currently takes a cash approach, since they budget to recover their cash expenses on an annual basis. Regulated investor-owned utilities are required to use the utility method. Most local governments' owned utilities apply for a cash method. Apply a cash method. For customers within the city, the bulk rate for treated water, this is in 2006, is $1.65 per 1,000 cubic feet, which equates approximately to 88 cents per cubic meter. For the purpose of the study, the costs have been collected for 2006, which is the latest year where full costs are available. The year 2006 will be referred to as a test year for water cost calculations. The costs for future years will need to be adjusted to account for escalation." Point number five, point two. Depreciation, recovery of the expense, provides a recapture of principal invested in utility assets and is a valid cost of doing business. Proper depreciation rates are crucial, are critical to the utility method of ratemaking. They ensure that proper amount of capital recovery is embedded in the rates and no less. By the cash method, the debenture financing of the asset is usually retired, and the capital recovered well before the asset has reached the end of its useful service life. For example, debentures are commonly issued for terms of ten to twenty years, whereas water mains have an eighty-year useful life. This is a graph. Five point two, point one. Inventory and replacement value by systems. Shows a 100% value of supply, treatment, and distribution, total $77 million. Table five point two, point two. Estimated depreciation expense by system shows 100% depreciation expense, $813,000. Item six point two. Even though the current revenue is generated by the city, recoup the annual cost of water, the rate for tap water derived by the utility approach is $1.51 per cubic meter, which is over double the current rate of 58 cents a meter. The current revenue generated by the city of Dawson Creek appears to be financially sustainable. The city did generate a surplus in 2006, approximately $575,000. The analysts in the report did not include a return to investors on the rate base as showed in the utility approach. Different approach, okay? So what is the mindset of city representatives upon receipt of this water cost study? Could it have been something like this? What a dilemma we have. If we leave things the way they are, how will we convince the masses that more taxes are necessary? $575,000 profit doesn't look good. This has to be changed. Obviously, the thing to do is to change the accounting system from this cash system to the utility system, which would allow $813,000 in depreciation, and voila! And now we can show a loss giving a legitimate reason to evaporate the $575,000 profit and show a legitimate loss, which you are allowed using the utility system. I would like to make you aware that the loss quoted for 210 was a direct result of the city borrowing the utility system as a method of accounting. Had the city continued with the cash system that was in place forever, there would be a profit slated by, there would be a profit as stated by Urban Systems. Consequently, the residents of Mile Zero Trailer Park were not contributing factors for not paying their fair share to the loss of 2010. The erroneous statement by Councilperson Schuman, as erroneously stated by Councilperson Schuman during the previous council meeting. Urban Systems also recommended that municipalities under 200,000 population use the cash system of accounting, like Fort St. John does. It cost the city of Dawson Creek over $1 million for Urban Systems' opinion in 2010. Shouldn't we be paying attention to their recommendations? This overview should help you realize that continued implementation of the utility system would be detrimental to the citizens of Dawson Creek. There's more. Page two. Page three. More due diligence. Although it is a different city, with a higher population, 19,000 to 20,000, I thought it would be a good idea to check with Fort St. John and read their 2011 bylaw, number 2053. It appeared to me that they did not get caught up with Dawson Creek's race to a utility system. In fact, they chose to remain with the tried and true system that has worked so effectively for so many years. The cash system continues to serve them well. They can show people a clear concept with no gray areas to decipher. The rate remains competitive with a 5/8 meter at 75 cents per cubic meter and a $15 per quarter meter charge. I hate to admit that maybe the administration of Fort St. John may use more due diligence in serving its citizens than ours in Dawson Creek. Thank you.
Okay, and you're leaving that for us, because obviously you state a whole bunch of facts, and as I mentioned to you before this, we're not in a position to be able to comment on any of those, so...
The facts all come from Urban Systems, it was copied off their water report.
Okay, any questions from council? Nope. Okay, well thank you, Mr. Reagan again for coming in. That's fine, you can just leave them actually right on the corner, that would be excellent.
Okay. How many do you need?
If we don't have enough, sir, we can photocall.
I got lots more.
Just right there, it's fine.
Thank you, council, for your tolerance.
Okay, thanks, so we're gonna move on now to six-five. We have Mr. Dan Pabelski in attendance, he's the general manager of the Dawson Creek Daily News. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Sorry to make you wait so long. Oh, yeah, are you coming forward? Absolutely. Oh, okay, please, come on forward then. I'm not sure exactly, all I have is that you're here.
Well, we're glad you're here, because you're one of the recipients. Are they taking the city staff or...
Hiding around the corner?
Hiding around the corner.
There you are.
Right on.
Actually, they're in possession, I just haven't guessed. See, they got dropped off. Recently, of course, we hold our annual People's Choice Award, and this year you were chosen as the Civic Leader of the Year.
Thank you.
And Lloyd was chosen as the Civic Employee of the Year.
I know Lloyd definitely deserves that.
I'll have to come here and present this to Fitz.
I appreciate that. I know Lloyd, I think everybody in the community knows Lloyd, a city employee who works pretty darn hard for the city out there every morning. Every day I come to work, he's out there a couple hours before me, working hard, so thanks Lloyd for everything you do.
At this time of year, it's really hard to keep the downtown clean, but I try to sweep all the side streets and stuff as much as possible, and like, the last few years has been really good.
We're very lucky with a clean downtown, and I know you work really hard, and I'm sure the wind wasn't helping much. It'd be nice if you could just stand at one end of downtown by the claw.
I suppose, I just don't know where it goes, it goes to Carter, usually.
So we've got the winners, so we'd like to congratulate Lloyd on being the Civic Employee of the Year. And then, your honor?
Well, thank you very much, appreciate that.
And then we've got the police officer and firefighter of the year. Oh, have they been asked again?
I'm not sure.
The chief will be accepting for...
Hopefully the newspapers get it right, I'm not Lynette.
And you're not wearing that. I like kittens.
Definitely not.
Congratulations, congratulations on the Lynette. And then I see Darren, or Paul?
Not Darren, I'm better looking to town for him. Constable's wicker thought it was at five o'clock, so he was on his way here, but I'll accept it for him.
Just to congratulate Constable Collins Wicker as the police officer of the year.
I'm not a constable.
Well, thanks to all of council, because this last year, we've been very diligent, worked really hard through our strategic priorities, and we've had a lot of success this last year, so thanks to all of you for everything you've done. On that, we'll go to six-six, we have Nicola Pacey in attendance. I thought, yes, hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
And we have Mr. Mock, good morning. And I'll give you a few minutes and then apologize for not being able to stick around when you were receiving this.
Yeah, that was lovely. Well, good morning, we did have Don Pettit here with us. Tragically, he had to leave a moment ago because he has a photo shoot, and I don't think we'd be sitting here right now if it wasn't for Don, and so I just wanted to pay tribute to him. Ron is our head of research and development for Peace Energy Cooperative at the moment, and I am the executive director for Peace Energy Cooperative. And we're here today to inform your worship and honored council members that Peace Energy Cooperative has been awarded the Group Leadership Award from CANWIA, the Canadian National Wind Energy Association. First awarded in 2001, this award recognizes the government, corporation, or organization that has contributed significantly to the advancement of wind energy in Canada. It recognizes Peace Energy Cooperative and its directors for their ability to recognize the tremendous opportunities that exist in British Columbia in renewable energy sources. Not only did Peace Energy recognize these opportunities, they were the pioneers in developing wind energy in the Peace River Regional District of British Columbia, when they initiated the Bear Mountain Wind Park, now more fondly known as Dawson Creek's Wind Park, because the community feels such great pride and ownership of this highly successful project, which you can see right out the window. Along with their partners Aeolus Wind with their technical expertise, and AltaGas with their financial contribution, Peace Energy Cooperative made it happen. British Columbia can satisfy 17% of its projected electricity demand with clean, affordable wind energy by the year 2025, according to the report Wind Vision 2025: A Strategy for B.C. by CANWIA. With the help of organizations such as Peace Energy Cooperative, they believe that the share of wind energy as a percentage of total generation in the province can increase from the current 250 megawatt, or 1% of electricity demand, to 5,250 megawatt, or 17% by the year 2025. The benefits are an estimated 22,500-person years of employment during construction, and 7,500-person years of employment over the 20- to 25-year lifespan of the wind energy projects. This is a very prestigious award for the cooperative to receive, it honors the hard work and dedication of the board of directors, plus all the members of the cooperative, of which there are currently 434. These people are your friends, neighbors, family members of this community, and others throughout Canada that support the development of renewable energy. As always, we want to spread the word by constantly and consistently promoting the development of renewable energy. We are doing something to ensure a cleaner, greener future for our children, and we invite all of you to join us in our mission and celebrate this terrific achievement. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. It's such an honor to be able to accept this on behalf of the cooperative, but really it's the members that deserve all of the thanks, and I wish they could all be here, it would be a little full.
Well, and as you say, Peace Energy Co-op's been going for quite a while, and the vision that Peace Energy Co-op started with, and as you said, when you look out the windows up on the hill, it's something to be proud of, and it's something exactly what you said, that the community, we do call it the Dawson Creek Wind Park, because it's something that we brag about. Council is constantly questioned and is very proud about what we have up on the hill, whether it's for tourism, whether it's for economic development reasons, it's something that we're always able to look to and help promote. And also want to thank Don Pettit like you did, because, as you know, I was down at the CANWIA conference as well, being one of the opening speakers for them, talking about Dawson Creek being the first place to have wind towers in B.C. And unbeknownst to me, while I was talking, the large screens, as you saw probably there, the large screens on both sides of the stage, the entire hour that I was up there, they were putting up pictures of wind towers, most of which were ours, and pictures taken by Mr. Don Pettit.
Yep, they're the most beautiful going.
So it was some amazing photos that he had that CANWIA...
Even the background for the award is of Bear Mountain Wind Park.
Excellent, very fitting. So thank you very much for coming in, congratulations. Is there anything from, questions or comments from council? No? Aside from congratulations from all of us, because it's something that the community really supports and is proud of.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move to our last delegation, which is six-seven, we have Ms. Joyce Lee, hello, and from Tourism Dawson Creek and Melanie Tircott, I believe, is, yes, hi there, Melanie, and we have, well, I'll let you start first, and then I know we're gonna do a little draw, and maybe Melanie and Joyce, you can explain what's going on. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, your worship and council. My name is Joyce Lee, and I am the new manager of the Visitors Information Center downtown. I took over just in the past few months from Deb Chafee, and Deb was instrumental with this and B.C. Hydro in bringing this conservation candlelight dinner to Dawson Creek. The dinner itself is a province-wide initiative by B.C. Hydro, and I saw evidence of that just down in Victoria this past week, these posters that we've brought here are everywhere. So it really is quite exciting to be doing this in our community as well. So it really is quite exciting to be doing this in our community as well. The initiative by BC Hydro is to encourage conservation, of course, for people to dine by candlelight, to set up the ambiance in the restaurants. And to date, we have 13 participating restaurants. Melanie has made a poster with the restaurants on them, but I'd like to just read them out. We have Boston Pizza, Brown Social House, Cafe Europa, The Prospects Lounge in Chances, Lee's Family Restaurant, The Lodge Motor Inn and Cafe, Mr. Mike's, The Orion Restaurant, Solas Bar and Grill, Stewie's Diner, and The Pantry in George Dawson Inn, Tony Roma, and finally, The White Spot. There's four grand prizes are going to be given away. Actually, let me back up. Tickets are available. We're going to be having them available to people at the Peace River Regional District, the Chamber of Commerce, City Hall, and of course, the Visitors Information Center this year. Thousands have been printed up. They will also be available at all the restaurants. So people will come in that are planning on eating at the restaurants that evening, put their name, fill out a ticket, and put their name in the draw for one of these four grand prizes, which comprise of a one-night stay in four of our fine hotels in town, and sponsored dinner for two worth $100 from four of our restaurants. The dinner is this Thursday night, October 27th, from 5:30 to 8:30. More information can be found on the website Planning For People. And we're also hoping that all of our council members here will support us by donning a T-shirt and making themselves available to go to one of these restaurants and welcome the people that come in to dine. So we've brought everyone T-shirts, and we're going to be taking a draw.
Yeah, I didn't warn council what we talked about earlier. So maybe what I'll do is I'll just let council know. Originally, I think, a couple of councillors thought, well, maybe we could have all of us go to one restaurant, draw one, and have a councillor dinner. But then we talked about it, and we thought with the amount of restaurants here, that we will do a draw, that every, instead of us, instead of we deciding where you go, we'll do a draw. And that's the restaurant that you'll be assigned to if you choose to go out that night. And there'll be a couple left over, and I believe we're going to throw those at senior staff here and let them draw a name as well, to encourage them to go out that evening. Melanie, do you want to do that now? Start, start it, doesn't matter. Okay, so this is where I'm going to go Thursday night? Of course Valerie's out of town for the week again, so I'm going to a candlelight dinner without my wife. I'm going to Stewie's Diner.
Yay, I'm going to Brown Social House.
Oh, it's supposed to be a yay for all of them, they're all great restaurants.
I just...
Mr. Mike's, enjoy Mr. Mike's.
Do we get to stand at the door?
Cafe Europa.
Cafe Europa.
Boston Pizza.
So Melanie, I'll draw if you want, for Teresa and Bud, and I'll let them know.
Oh, first?
Because we don't want them to miss out.
No.
So Bud, we're going to get him to go to Chances. And Teresa is going to go to Tony Roma's. Maybe we'll, we should have a few left, so I think we'll pass around the senior staff first. No pressure.
Thank you. I've got leaves down the block.
White Spot.
Thought we already picked a white spot.
The Orion. How many are left, Melanie? After this?
Two left.
Solas.
Tyra.
Solas, so I'm thinking we should draw one and convince all the media to go together for dinner. Usually you only show up for the free ones, right? So if the, okay, so Lodge Motor Inn and Cafe, we're going to put it out for the media. And for the Chamber of Commerce
Yeah.
is The Pantry of the George Dawson Inn. Those are the challenges to everybody for this Thursday night, and turn it back over to you.
We're just going there for dinner, and we have to stand and greet everybody? What do you, what do you have us do?
No, we're, well, this is the candlelight dinner, obviously, as was mentioned. So what we're hoping is that, as councillors and staff and media and chamber, that we're just going to be supporting the event. So please go yourselves with your family, friends, to the restaurant that you drew out, and support the event, that's what we're asking everyone to do.
You'll be donning T-shirts and hopefully greeting people that come in to the restaurant to participate.
Yeah, but we'll let you, we'll let you have something to eat too.
Can I have a picture of everyone holding their T-shirts?
You can have that if you wish. Okay, so if all of council can come up to the front, that'd be great. You don't have to put it on.
Yes, they took after, looked after me.
That's a big shirt. I go small when you're wearing it.
They expect you to use a lot of that.
Okay, that looks great. Cheryl, hold your T-shirt up, please.
Big T-shirt, fresh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're going to all of them?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks Joyce, was there anything else you wanted to highlight for that evening?
Enjoy your meal, enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks so much for supporting us and helping us out. Let's take a two-minute recess, because once we get back into this, then we have committee of the whole, and we'll be sitting for a while. So a few minutes then for council to top up their coffees. So we'll call the meeting back to order. We were at reports, so the next one we have on the agenda is Report 7-7. And this is Report 11-177 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for development permits for freezing land and leasing. And this is for TGO Transport on 92nd Avenue. Councillor McFadden.
Move the recommendation, your worship.
Seconded by Councillor Schuman. Any questions or comments? Just, yeah, another good news story, and it's nice to see that industrial park that just started filling up very quickly. So that's just a sign of the economic times in our community. And I know I'm hearing from a lot of the companies that next year is going to be just as busy, so be ready. So seeing nothing else, so all those in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. And 7-8 is Report 11-184, and that's from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for development permit for Canadian Silica Industries, and this is on Imperial Access Road. Councillor Bellic.
I love the recommendation.
Okay, seconded by Councillor Kenny. Discussion.
Could I just make a clarification?
Sure.
Thank you, your worship. What, I know this is for offices and staff, but what does this company do?
Okay, so Canadian Silica is a company that actually supplies, sells, and works with the oil and gas companies supplying the fracking sand. So this was an ideal location for them, because there are train loads a day of sand that are coming through here. And being, they needed a place where they were close to a spur line and be able to bring in that sand, store it, and be able to then bring it back out into the field for the company. So if you haven't seen fracking sand, it is this very specialized, fine, fine granular sand. Special kind of sand they need, and so that's what this company specializes in, so.
Do we know where the sand comes from? How far away?
You know what, I'm not, to be totally honest with you, I'm not sure. I know some of it comes from down in the States, some of it down, I thought down by Golden area.
Wow.
It comes from all over, but the one thing it's important to note is, you know, we're always commenting to CN about upgrading our rail lines. So the more that these companies are bringing in product by rail, the more beneficial it is to us to have a solid business case that they need to stay on top of that transport.
Exactly.
Okay, any other discussion then? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. And 7-9 is Report 11-179 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for development permit for the Hyper Toys 701 Highway 2. Councillor Kenny.
I move the recommendation.
Seconded by Councillor Schuman. And Councillor Bellic.
Thank you, your worship. I have some questions around us and our car washes, water use of that level. And I know when we went through bylaws, we didn't have specific items about recycling, filtering, what sort of effluent came from the water into our stormwater sewers. And I'm just wondering with this specific report, if they've addressed those issues in any way, if they're motivated to do some high, you know, cutting-edge stuff around this wash center that would help both recycle the water and assure that we don't get soaps and stuff into the storm sewers. And if staff has heard anything from them. I don't see anything specific here, and I think we need to start looking at, you know, new developments in this kind of high-use water area about what sort of factors are included to conserve water.
Yeah, well, I know, I can't speak 100% specifically to your question, but we can definitely find out for you. But I know that the existing car washes that we have in town go through quite a rigorous process to make sure that they conserve water and recycle the water, because, I mean, for obvious reasons. And I'm not sure, you know, Kevin's not in the room, but I can almost pretty confidently say that this company's looked at that too. And Jim, to throw you on the spot as you walked in, the question is for the development permit for the Hyper Toys, for the car wash, was there any discussion with staff around recycling of water in this specific?
There was, the proponents themselves are talking about that system, but their question was, do we mandate it, and we do not?
I'll address it in committee of the whole possibly, some questions to Kevin, because I'm wondering about industrial developments and stuff too, if we're, if our sewer, if our stormwater drainage and stuff can be, you know, taken to another level. It's just an interesting, thank you very much. Hey, I mean, I'm all for increasing, increasing these services.
Excellent, thanks.
For financial reasons, our understanding is the proponent is going ahead with a recycling system. The, even the oldest car wash in town has jury-rigged a recycling system. It's just, doesn't make any financial sense not to do it.
I think our water policy is certainly helping us there, yeah.
Yes, no, exactly. Any other questions from council? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. We're now at bylaws, so first one is 8-1 is Permissive Tax Exemption Bylaw 4120, 2011, for consideration of adoption. And Councillor Schuman, seconded by Councillor McFadden. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. And 8-2 is the Animal Control Bylaw 4122 for adoption. Councillor McFadden, seconded by Councillor Kenny. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. 8-3 is Ticket Information Unization Amendment Bylaw 4123 for adoption. Councillor Kenny and Councillor Bel, ah, sorry, Schuman. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. 8-4 is Zoning Amendment Bylaw 4124 for adoption.
Which one does that, please?
4124, thank you.
That would be the one that you did the public hearing on this morning.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Okay, so Councillor Kenny and Councillor Bellic. Any questions on that one? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. 8-5 is Report 11-181 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is our Fees and Charges Amendment Bylaw 4125 for first three readings. And Councillor Bellic, move first three, and Councillor Schuman. Any questions on this? Councillor Bellic.
Thank you, your worship. The only thing was the striking of the class sizes, the pool. Is that a difference in Red Cross and safety regulations, that the class sizes can be changed, or that we add staff to it?
Jim?
I'll throw you, your worship, it's because the new facility can accommodate more than the old facility could.
Oh, okay, thank you. Makes sense.
Any other questions then? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. 8-6 is Report 11-180 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is the Park Dedication Bylaw. I think I'm going to see four hands jump up that want to be part of this one, because this is an exciting one. But I'll go to Councillor Bellic, your other hand up first.
Thank you, your worship. And thank you, staff, and what an interesting read, tracing all of the little parks around town. And it would be wonderful to see the Historical Society write the history of it. It was such a cool idea to, for staff to go to the Historical Society for information about our history of parks. And I must say, I really appreciate staff's way of managing future parks additions so that we don't find ourselves in this situation again, not knowing where we're at, so that there's a process all along the line to incorporate the new parks from subdivisions. So I really, I think this is just such a great bylaw, and I move the recommendation.
I was wondering about that, yeah, so she's moving the first three readings, and Councillor McFadden, I believe, is seconding. I know from, we got to thank staff, I know this is a lot of work to put this together. But for the community's information, I think what's a real strong takeaway from this is just shy of 10% of our community is now dedicated parkland. Even myself going through this, when you drive around town, I don't think you appreciate or realize how much parkland we actually have in our community. 10% is nothing to shy away from for sure. And I believe, if I can get this correct here, it was 38 separate parks we have in Dawson Creek with over 550 acres of land as dedicated parkland. And I think with this policy, what's really important is with this dedication, is there, it puts it back as a community ownership, because it's being dedicated as parkland. And if anything is ever going to change, now it'll have to not only go through council, but it'll have to go through a referendum process in the community on this. Now, we already had a lot of the parks in town identified, but this was a great opportunity to put them all together in one policy, one, to have them all captured now and treated the same. So, big thanks to staff, and I know there was a lot of work. And I started off with Kathy, I think, was working pretty hard on this before she retired, and...
Pretty much the last year of her employment was spent on this, your worship.
Yes. And to Marilyn's point, the historical issues, having to go through all of the files to make sure we had all the accurate information here was... I was watching Kathy pull out a lot of that, and it was interesting, blowing the dust off the old brown pieces of paper that were 50 years old. A lot of research had to go into it.
I went through some of those papers on a completely different issue, trying to find, oh, I know, when I first was elected, we were trying to find, Kathy and I, all of the old minutes and stuff, to see how many women had been, was before we put our pictures on the wall and could see who had made up the councils, how many women had served as councillors in Dawson Creek. And we came across little, like, quill pen ink writings, minutes, and they really hadn't been organized at that time. And Kathy started collecting them up and finding this history. So archiving is a really cool thing, and a really helpful thing in decision-making. It's a fun, we must thank Kathy for having been here with us.
Jim?
Sir, your worship, one very key point out of this is, as you say, including the riparian areas that aren't designated park, because the riparian protection is actually greater than a park protection there, and it can't be removed by the citizens, even by referendum. So you have around 10% of your community is park. But as you know, the reason we started down this process is we discovered that many areas that the, there was a general assumption it was a park, like Kin Park, was not a park. But as of today, because of the three readings, Kin Park is a park and couldn't be sold or developed. It was amazing going through the records, just to find out how things became considered as parks, even if they didn't become parks.
And as you said, over the decades, the assumption
Yes.
by the community, and Kin Park being one of the most visual out of that list, where everybody, including council, always assumed that... where everybody, including council, always assumed that Kin Park was a designated park. So to solidify that within the policy is not only prudent, but important to make sure that, you know, it's captured. The last thing we need is somebody to come forward and want to develop on it, and we didn't have it identified.
That's good.
Any other questions then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed, and it's carried. Kin Park is a park, almost. So that brings us to Mayor's Business. Thanks to council as well. That was a lot of information today. I know we had a couple of delegations, so the two, two delegations that came forward this morning, I'm not quite sure, they told me there was gonna be specific asks in there, and that was Ms. Weatherall and Mr. Reagan. Not sure if there's any comments from council or anything needed, because there was no specific ask in there. A lot of the information that came forward, I asked for that in advance, so we'd be able to formulate some kind of response, but we just received it today, so I can't respond to any of their comments, because I'm not sure without researching some of the numbers and everything. But as we all know, from a council perspective, the water structure, the water rate structure was changed for obvious reasons after we went through all the consultation reports. And so far, council has not deviated from that message and sticking through with that. Anything to add? No? So the only thing, I'll mention our Mayor's Business, which I know will come under probably Director of Corporate Administration, too, is just good luck and congratulations to everybody who's put their name forward to run for council. We have fifteen names running for council here in Dawson Creek, and I really wish everybody the best of luck, and hopefully it'll be a nice, positive campaign. And I think more importantly, encouraging everybody to get out and vote, that's gonna be really important. You know, we stress that every year, and we're always looking for ways to try to get the community more involved and try to build on the involvement in the community getting out on Election Day, so good luck to, I know we have three incumbents in the room, Sue, Terry, and Cheryl, who are running again. And I'll save all of my other comments for the three who are not gonna be staying with us for a later meeting. On that, we'll move to the diary, Jim.
Nothing to do on the diary, your worship.
Okay.
Except I'll kick over to Greg, of course, for the two standing items.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, your worship. On Thanksgiving weekend, I hope everybody saw us starting to work on the pop-up roof over the multipurpose hall. I was pleased for a number of reasons, not only because it's really nice to get a roof on before the snow falls, but also now that people can actually see stuff happening, hopefully that will put to death the rumors around town that we've stopped working because we've run out of money, or we've stopped working because WorkSafe has closed us down. None of those are true. We're still working away. The roof is almost complete in terms of the structure. The roofing is slated to start next week to get that all buttoned up before winter. We have a steel stud contractor on site putting up interior walls. We did the water service last week, and we'll be doing the sewer lift station this week. It's already on site, it just needs to be installed. The hazardous materials are still an issue, because obviously they're not gonna go away until we either take them away or encapsulate them. And so they're eating up our contingency fund, something fierce. But I want to emphasize again that it's contingency that we're, that we're spending. It's not, it's not coming out of the main budget. However, having said that, in the spirit of full disclosure and looking forward and planning for the future, I do want to schedule a meeting with the Design Committee to go over, once again, as we did when we started the whole project, to go over the list of items to be done and see where we can potentially cut back or defray or defer some of those costs, just to make darn sure we still have enough money left in the contingency to finish all that work. We are looking at finishing in April, which means we are behind our original schedule, and it's taking time because of the, having to work around all the, primarily the lead paint issues. And we're hoping to get that order lifted in the very near future. We've done a lot of testing, and we're not finding any airborne contaminants or any in the workplace construction dust. So, once we get that out of the way, things should speed up. But having said that, K-PAC is no more excited about moving in February than they would have been in December, so they get to move in the summer.
I think that's an important point to stress, though, Greg, is, is we've had that communication with K-PAC, we're discussing them, with them, and February, when we were hoping to try to be open by January, February is right in the middle of their programs anyway, and even they said that, you know, that was kind of bad timing for them to try to move and change and reroute programs, so they were probably looking at wanting to wait until their programs ended in April or May anyway, before they started. So it's not gonna be a hindrance on K-PAC themselves by this delay.
That's, that's true. The Board at K-PAC has been apprised of the situation, and, you know, they're anxious to get moved in, but they're, they understand the reasons, and they're, you know, they'll be happy to move in in the summer as well. The reclaimed water plant isn't obviously subject to the same rumors, because every time you go by there, you can see people working, they're going like crazy. They formed the slab, or they poured the slab for the wet well, they're forming the walls as we speak, steelwork is being done right now. We've installed a duct bank for B C Hydro and encased it in concrete, and it runs all the way from the corner at one hundred and sixteenth and first, down past the runway at the airport. That was a big project, and we're happy to have that done. Next steps will be pouring the walls. We gotta bring the water service across First Street, and that means we're gonna have to close First Street when we do it, so we are hopefully gonna do that on Saturday, assuming, of course, we get the permit from Northern Health. Reason we need to do it on Saturday is, my gosh, that's a busy street. You don't realize it till you actually stop and see all the traffic coming by. So the, the budget for that project is still good, and the schedule is still good, and we're still looking at a mid-February completion for that. That's all I have to report on that.
Excellent, thanks. Any questions about the diary? Okay, so we'll move on to consent calendar, and someone to move that. Counselor Belik and Counselor Schuman, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Strategic priorities chart, Jim.
Through your worship, you see that many items have been crossed off since your last meeting, which is typical at this time of the year, and there'll be a couple of others, including library sustainability plan, crossed off for your next meeting. The department heads, as you know, report off in the Committee of the Whole how they're doing on their strategic priorities, so I won't steal their thunder.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Further to the library, having talked about, you know, doing the public consultation and information, or public information gathering and information-giving sessions, what would you, Jim, expect as a timeline for that? Will that start in the New Year, or is there any chance of us doing some of that early? Two, three, dash, probably.
Through your worship, this is probably news to you guys, but there's a municipal election on November nineteen.
Oh, I forgot about it, I did.
It's, you know, that's a major project that will involve making a decision about, basically, a five million dollar facility, and normally you would wait until after the election, see which counselors are seated, see who has an interest in participating in it, before you would set those meetings. The mayor, it may or may not be possible to hold meetings in December, it just depends on people's schedules.
Does it need to be referred again to strategic planning, or has it now entered a staff-level organization?
No, through your worship, the outcome of your original process was to determine that decisions have to be made about the facility. So in your strategic planning in January, you're probably going to want to make that decision around the facility one of your priorities for the coming year.
So should I be referring that now to strategic planning, so it comes up on the, on the new council?
I think the only person in the room who can do that is Mayor Bernier, because he's the only person that we know for sure will be at that strategic planning.
I can't try anyone's ass.
If he wants to do that, I think that would be fine.
I don't know, where are you going for dinner, and who's buying? Actually, in all fairness, I think to Jim's point, we wanna wait until we have the new council here, but because this is going through the process, I think it'd be no different than the airport sustainability plan. These things are gonna be working through.
They'll continue to pop up.
They will, and I believe, once we get a new council, we have our strategic priorities session scheduled for right away in January, and we'll be going through all this. So these will come up, and I don't know if we need to make special motions now, at this point, to, to make sure they, because they will be brought up, and then we have to go through that debate with the new council of where they fit on the priorities.
We've done a couple of others, just to have them on the list, so the new council would know what we're doing, but I'm sure it'll pop up.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I will make sure it's there.
So I'll be voting for the counselors who are running for the libraries of the world.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So on that, was that it, Jim, then?
Yes, it is, your worship.
Okay, so question-answer period, I don't believe we have anybody signed up for that. Before we get Committee of the Whole, is there any questions from the media at this time, or? You're always free after the Committee of the Whole if there's questions that arise. So we can jump into the Committee of the Whole reports. Before we do that, also want to thank Chad Anderson, who came forward. As you know, Shaw, who usually films our council meetings and puts them on the television for the community, has decided, I believe, province-wide that they will take off the time during the campaign, to make sure it's fair for everybody, but we want to ensure that we had our council meetings still streamlined and put on our, on our, on our city websites. So, thanks, Chad, for coming in and doing that, to make sure that the community can still see what's going on, so, thank you. So Committee of the Whole, do we have RCMP in attendance? I believe, I didn't see the staff sergeant.
They were, they've come in.
I don't know, we'll check and see.
I know it's a little early, if they're, we can always-
I noticed we have the E F R chief, though.
Yes.
What are you doing, Dean?
If he's not outside, maybe we'll jump into fifteen two then, Shorty. Good morning. And I know you're not Lynette, but please give her our congratulations.
Which means, by the way, that you're not the firefighter of the year or something.
Yeah, just to get that straight. So, you have the report in front of you, it was an overly busy month as far as calls went, but some things I wanna, to highlight out here in our equipment, every year we have our equipment pump-tested and serviced by experts, I guess, subject matter experts from outside the city. And this year, we found that our ladder truck, the spindle on the ladder truck needs to be replaced, and that's kinda, that's a component that continues, because we can spin our ladders three hundred and sixty degrees, so it's that little component that makes sure that all your electrical and hydraulics and everything works as it's spinning, and that component is failing, so that has to be replaced. That'll be, should be anytime soon now, they had to order the parts, not something that they have on the shelf waiting, kind of, you gotta order it. So that's one thing I wanted to point out, and as well as our engine two, which is the city's oldest pumper truck, I made a note on there that it needs some repairs due to the, the testing and whatnot, there's some, there's eleven valves on it, and ten valves need to be serviced or replaced. And they don't know, when I say serviced or replaced, because you don't know until you take it apart, so. Other than that, all of our, our ground ladders passed, our S E B A passed, all that stuff that gets tested on a yearly basis, passed. Unfortunately, those two pieces of equipment need some more attention.
Are those, do those fall within your expected budget, those repairs?
No, I never budgeted for that, because it's not something that I thought was gonna fail. So, no, that's, that's not something I budgeted for, either one of those things, so. Other than that?
I noticed you were doing some training with the RCMP as well, starting some fires and letting them put it out.
Yes, we ran into an incident where there was, we had a hazardous material spill. And so there were some questions from the other agencies, the RCMP is, you know, how do you guys deal with it, you know, how do you know what's good, what's bad? So, in conjunction with some fire extinguisher training, we also did some hazardous material training with them as well. So every crew in the fire department, the RCMP has the same crew, so they follow the same shift pattern, so they just sent their on-shift crew over and spent about an hour and a half, did some training, so.
Any questions from council? Okay, well, thanks, Shorty, for coming in, thanks for the information. And again, give our congratulations to Lynette and the whole gang over there. We'll jump back to fifteen one, to our staff sergeant, good morning.
Good morning.
Good timing.
The Monday morning juggle.
Thanks for coming in.
Morning, everyone.
We know how busy you are, so we really appreciate it.
Always time for mayor and council. So, not included in your monthly report is an incident that we, we broke on Friday, Saturday, dealing with City of Dawson Creek in the Peace region. We were very, very successful in, excuse me, dealing with a break-in-enter ring that extended down to Quinell Prince George. I currently have five people in custody-
Wow.
-and we seized quite a bit of property stolen, so.
Can I ask what kind of property? Are you allowed to say? Because I'm just always curious, because one of the things we hear all the time, especially around the oil and gas service companies of, you know, quads, generators, all those kind of things going missing quite frequently, and it's becoming an annoyance, so it's great to hear, five people.
And I think that's part of the success story, your worship, is that we located a number of E T Vs, generators, about thirty-five firearms, some Toxidermy pieces, and we believe that this ring extended down to Quinell Prince George, over to Alberta as well, so it's quite extensive.
So they weren't all five local people, then, obviously?
Five local people, correct.
Oh, they were.
Correct, yeah. They seem to be operating out of the peace here. We executed five search warrants, both in the City of Dawson Creek and on some rural property, and that's where we found a majority of items stashed, is on the rural property. So we're, we're quite pleased with this success detachment as a whole, participated, called in many resources, as you can appreciate, but overall, overwhelming success, and we just have to piece it together, see how far this extends, and, of course, get the property back to the rightful owners.
Good, well, good job, that's, that's great news.
If you see any CDs labeled Schuman.
We'll make that top priority, counsel for getting those returned to you.
Yeah, I lost my CDs.
Yeah, well, this is obviously, though, these five people, we're assuming are not part of the, which we think might be youth, that have been going around, going into vehicles that are open late at night in residential areas and taking CDs, Mark Schuman. But is there, are you still getting phone calls, because, around that specifically? Because I know, I still get comments, and I keep telling people, you need to let the RCMP know, even though it might seem a minor annoyance of just some CDs, but if we don't know, maybe tracking where their patterns are on what nights, we might not be able to catch these kids, so.
Yeah, that's correct, and, you know, we tried to solicit to the public to say, look, you know, call in with, with what's, what's occurring. Your calls, your tips may seem very minor, but we can piece these things together, and I would suggest that this incident dealing with the stolen property and the break-in-enters was part and parcel that we solicited some help from the public. So, of course, in, in the report to mayor and council was the break-ins to the vehicles, the thefts from the vehicles. It caused quite a bit of work for our members, as you can imagine, early morning calls from, from victims, and we think we identified some people, and we have taken appropriate action on that. So another success story. And of course, we use the media to our advantage, support, putting the word out there to lock your vehicles, secure your vehicles. And we also utilized some citizens on patrol, some volunteers, that were going around at night with vests, with pamphlets, information, saying, we found your vehicle unlocked, left the pamphlet, please secure your items. So, we've, we've been fairly busy here over the last month and a half, we've, you know, made these, these inroads, and I'm quite pleased with the participation of all detachment members.
Good. That's great news. Was there, I see towards the end of your report, there's some other news, though, maybe you wanted to highlight.
Right, I've kind of been holding off on this, and-
But we're gonna put you feet to the fire here to make, make you talk about it.
You want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, it's with some, some deep regrets that I am moving on to a different position within the Dawson Creek detachment. Had some discussions, as did my, my bosses in Prince George with Mr. Schute and Mr. Bernier on this. I was approached with this job opportunity early in the year, and I said, no, thank you. I felt like I had some unfinished business with- I felt like I had some unfinished business with the detachment. And I also had a commitment to mayor and council, and all the staff at City of Dawson Creek, to continue on with rebuilding our detachment. So, I was approached again in the spring, and reluctantly agreed to take on the new roles in advisory NCO. And basically, that role is to oversee all the detachments in the Peace area, Dawson Creek, Fort St. John, Fort Nelson, Tumble Ridge, and Chatwin, Hudson's Hope. So I did accept this position, and I believe that, and this is obviously not just my own doing, my own success, but leadership is from the top-down. And I believe we made some huge, huge strides with policing this community, the rural community, and making this a safer community with a number of programs that we instituted over the last two, two-and-a-half years. So, I'm pleased with the progress of the detachment. I believe, you know, it's a starting point. It's, I'm leaving it in fairly good shape for the next person to take over. And our programs, our staffing, all the support we've had from mayor and council has been tremendous. I don't think we could ask for anything, anything more, anything better, and I'd like to see that cooperation continue in the years to come.
Well, I'd almost reluctantly say congratulations, because, you know, we've had a great working relationship, and you've done a stand-up superb job in your role. It's nice we're not losing you out of the area, though, and so congratulations on that. I know it's a great opportunity for you. I believe we'll obviously still be seeing you around in your role overseeing our detachment as well. Do you understand it?
I will be. And I will have some influence on Dawson Creek, so, and I will be remaining in the community. I mean, that was priority number one, that will not be removing out of the Peace region, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Counselor Balick.
Thank you, worship. Darren, I wanted to ask you, I think this is great, congratulations at this advisory level. What I'm wondering is if there's a formal region-wide program in place for Aboriginal liaison or programs specifically, and where you would be moving with that, if you have an idea how that works, and how all of our detachments are involved in that.
Right, actually, there is an advisory role located in Prince George, and that position is actually vacant. They're just staffing that right now, but that just deals with Aboriginal issues. So similar to what I'm doing here locally in the Peace, there is a role in Prince George. And once that candidate is identified and gets in that role, he will be working with all the detachments in this area.
Thank you.
And so the plan is, looking at your report, to the new staff sergeant, Mr. McDonald, is scheduled to start November 1st?
Correct, yes, next Tuesday. And one of the advantages is that Milo McDonald arriving, he arrives from Fort St. John. He's aware of the regional issues, of the influences here with crime groups, and the nature of the environment we're in with the economy. So I think that's definitely our advantage.
Excellent. Any further questions then for staff? Well, seeing none, again, congratulations, and we're sorry to be losing you in the position that you were in. And as I said, council's appreciated all of your support and your leadership that you've shown for your members over there and for the community, and I'm at least glad to hear that you're not leaving the beautiful city of Dawson Creek.
Right, well, thank you very much for your support, and I will be around. I plan on attending your council meetings and of course, wandering the halls of city hall to say hello on an informal basis. So any concerns you do have, by all means, my phone lines, my door is always open.
Excellent, thanks again.
Thanks very much.
Okay. So on that, we'll move to fifteen-three, which is the director of corporate administration.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'll talk about the time that our department spent with communication efforts, increased use of the Facebook page, and we've had a redesign of the city website. There's favorable response to that. It seems to be quite user-friendly. Our community isn't, our newsletter is going to be distributed next week, containing information on the election, on the sewer master plan, and on the airport sustainability plan. Included in my report is some stats on the Facebook page. Just includes graphs with the daily users, the weekly users, and monthly users, and all increasing.
Which is actually very interesting.
Mm-hmm.
I was looking at the one that's 50,000 views. Am I reading that correctly? On page 198 of 248? At the bottom there, it says...
I can't see with my...
Fifty thousand views of posts since July alone. A total of 82,000 since the inception of the page.
Yeah.
Oh, since, yeah, 50,000 since the beginning, yes. And you'll see on our next page with the council meeting, the videos, up to 60 viewers, and it peaks at the time of the meeting. So it's nice that people are wanting to watch it right away, and hear what council's decided right away. It's nice to be able to see that. So I think we'll be continuing on with that service. Onto other duties in our department, the sanitary sewer master plan, RFP, has been issued, and it's going to close on October 31st. Human resources is also a large part of our department, with our deputy director of corporate administration spending quite a bit of time on it daily on that. Airport sustainability plan, we did have our public consultation sessions in early October. The consultants were very pleased with the amount of information they received from the community. We're going to be expecting a report towards the end of November from them.
End of November?
Yes.
And the election. I, although I can't officially declare an election by voting, I can unofficially congratulate Mayor Mike Bernier, elected by acclamation.
Thank you.
And we did have a meeting last Friday, where we drew the names for the order of the ballot. And that's posted on our webpage. I don't know if I need to repeat that at this time. So just go to our webpage, and you'll see the order of the ballot. We have loan authorization bylaw out for electoral response. To date, it's been out there for a week, and we haven't received any response for that. Deadline for that is November 18th. And I just wanted to remind everyone, advanced voting days for the election are the two Wednesdays before the general voting day, so November 9th and November 16th, and that's at city hall. And then voting day is November 19th at the Encana Center.
And Brenda, maybe you just highlight, because there were some changes or the perception of what advanced voting days are for, and that's still open. It used to be, you know, you had to come in with a reason why you couldn't make general voting, but...
Yeah, you don't need a reason why you aren't able to be there on general voting day.
So anybody can come in on those two days and vote.
Yeah, it's your choice when you'd like to come and vote. And I think that's about all I wanted to highlight, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, worship. One brief question, I checked out the videos of the meetings, and I'm wondering, through you and to Chad possibly, yeah, I only wanted to see the bits with myself. No, I wondered about, fast forward, fast forward, rewind on there, if we could skip through. I didn't want to spend whatever the two hours or something watching the real time, and I wondered if there was a capability to be able to slide to parts of the meeting that you were interested in.
I can push that over to Chad?
It should be possible, maybe with Chad.
I just took the little button, slide, and slid it along until I found the place, but I didn't see a fast-forward button in it, so.
Yeah.
I couldn't do it frame by frame. I had to just guess how far into the meeting the thing might be.
There is an option that we can do. There is an extra cost to it, though. We could link the video to an item, to the items in the agenda.
Oh, I see.
But that would require time, Tyra would need to, as the meeting goes on, she would mark where we were, and it would take a little bit more time and a little bit more money.
Yeah. So right now, you can load, you can slide things across to fast-forward using the bottom track bar, but then you have to wait for it to reformat.
If it was a more frame-by-frame fast-forward, it might solve it cheaply, but see what, see what check. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brenda? No, okay, well, thanks very much. I know you and the rest of your elections group will be busy for the next couple of weeks.
Very much so.
Yes. So move then to the chief financial officer, fifteen-four.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shelley.
You have our report in front of you. Basically, just to highlight the two main capital projects, Calvin Crook Art Center and the Water Reclamation Project. Basically, gives you a summary of project costs to date, and what we're claiming with our partners, the provincial government and Shell Canada. Just one correction to the Calvin Crook Art Center, our claims to the provincial government are approximately 2/3, or 2.5 million, and everything is good within the budget envelopes on those two projects. Going on to collections of property taxes, happy to report that everything in that area is positive. Our collections to date, 97.86 percent, and our annual tax sale, which we've reported on previously, 10 properties went up for sale, and five have been redeemed to date, so. No special carbon tax reporting to date, but we will continue that at year-end. And just one adjustment to the gaming agreement with the province. We received notification about a month ago, and they've made three modifications that are minor and positive for our reporting requirements. So they're just streamlining it a little bit, so that's, that's good. And then we have the special events, Janet's birthday, October 3rd. She always adds a little fun to the department, so just basically tried to get some balance and teamwork in there, so that's all positive. And we've started the 2012 budget process, and basically put out the information to the department managers, and are just waiting, waiting back for that. And strategic priorities are ongoing, so. Any questions?
More of a comment, if what I've heard is correct, too, not only for the 2010 tax sales, you said there were 10 that went up for sale, but five have already been redeemed back, which means people came in and paid their taxes.
That's right. That's 2011.
And if I understand, yeah, 2011, sorry, but 2010, all the properties that went for sale in the 2010 tax sale, none of them ended up transferred, right?
Transferred to the city.
Everybody came in and paid.
That's correct.
So that's a good news story, too.
Yeah.
Which means everybody was able to come in, and nobody lost their homes because of taxes. And we, when you look at, you know, almost 98 percent of our tax collected, too, that's got to be ranking up there with some of the highest years ever as well. People are around affordability, I guess, right?
I think that's correct, and, you know, we just made more contact with people that are in arrears quicker, and so that has had a positive effect as well, so.
So staff downstairs actually phones people and...
That's right. Being proactive instead of reactive.
That's excellent. Any questions from council?
No, just because Shelley is so organized at aligning with the vision and guiding principles and the things of excellence, for the general public and newspapers, I'm just looking at the end of her report being the strategic priorities, operational strategies for her department, and just wanting to make sure that everyone realizes that we not only do that as a council and global effort, but each department does these, and we can see by the little checkoff list where they are along that road. And what a, what a great sustainability thing that has been, and ability to keep ourselves on one track, going in one direction. And I guess, again, to thank staff for being integrated into that vision and sustainability practice, so that we're all on the same page going forward, and we can tell at any one moment. You also mentioned it somewhere in the report, that, you know, every month, departments receive feedback on where they are in their budget, and just such a nice process to know that you have that kind of management in-house. So, makes me feel good reading it. It makes me feel like I don't have to question everything that a department is doing. It's just there and visible.
Unlike, say, in the past.
Yes, unlike the past, I'm talking as an experienced member of council.
Well, that's, as we've said around this room, what's so important about doing the strategic priority sessions with council, and how that assists staff, because staff knows, on every decision that they're making, does it align with council, instead of having to guess all the time. So, you know, that's why I'm looking forward to January with the new council doing strategic priorities again, because it's not just for us, it's for the entire well-being of the corporation of how we operate.
I think that's exactly, couldn't be stressed enough. You've got it on the head, that joint strategic planning, and having everyone right there at the table from the first meeting, it has made a huge difference for alignment.
Excellent. Any other questions then? Thanks, Miranda. Thanks, Shelley.
Welcome.
So move to fifteen-five, the director of infrastructure and sustainable development. Since you don't have a lovely seat up at the table all the time, Kevin, welcome.
That's right. So as you see, I brought Reg with me today. He's going to give us a little bit of an update on the watershed, and also some work we're doing in the Dawson Creek in results of, to do with the flooding that we had this summer. I've been asked to just give a bit of an overview of the water security report card that I presented to council, or brought forward to council in early September as part of this. I've also got the regular committee of the whole that went, which you'll have, so if there's any questions on that, I can certainly ask that as well. But what I thought is that just for everybody else's benefit, just a quick overview of the water security report card.
Sure. And maybe before that, then, I know you probably won't have time, then I want to get right into the actual report, so before we get into the water security, is there any questions on the rest of Kevin's reports, aside from a full page of building permits this month?
Nine million.
Nine point nine, $10 million worth of building permits. And really want to stress the fact of, when you look at the permits issued for the last two years, we're what, $19 million approximately of building permits in the last two years have been issued?
Yeah, it's been...
That's amazing for a community our size, and for people out there who are saying that there's not much happening in the community, there's $90 million worth of happening over the last two years, so.
Yeah.
That's really important, I think, to stress.
Seventy-seven million of it taxable, your worship.
Taxable, yes.
Which is particularly significant. And about another 100 new businesses.
100 new businesses, and I think we're over, in the last, what, 200 new dwellings in the last couple of years as well?
Yeah.
And we're starting to see, you know, when you talk about people looking at the options out there, it's not just single-family dwellings, there's a lot of duplexes, threeplexes, fourplexes still going up in the community for the rental options for people as well, so. Sue, did you have something you wanted to...
Yeah, I just had one question for you, Kevin, there. When we're looking at all the business startups over the last couple of years, do we know how many are still there?
Yeah.
You know, like, you see the number, and you wonder, like, you see it every year.
Whether they come and go.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we renew those licenses each year. If they don't, if they aren't renewed, I'm not sure that we actually track that, to see if, you know, if something's been here for long, and then it's...
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, with the, with the oil and gas activity, you know, where they come into the area, or construction, they come into the area, they purchase a business license so that they can do the work, but then the work's completed, and then they leave. So it'd be interesting to see those numbers, what sticks, what's sticking, right?
Yeah, and how long they've been here.
And we know we're getting approximately 100 new businesses a year, but are you thinking, maybe we actually get 200, and we lost 100? Or is that what you're thinking?
Well, I'm not thinking 100, but I'm thinking in percentages.
Oh, I'm just...
It might, you know, like, I'm thinking, like, you know, when you say that you have this many, like, how many are there just for the season? You know, because they have to have a business license in order to operate, so, so how many are there for the season? Just be interesting, you know?
I'll see if I can get some information on that, actually, for the next committee of the whole, just to see what we can dig up. That's a good, good point.
Counselor, your worship, your total business licenses issued each year is basically a net figure, because what happens is, in 2010, we issued 1,205. In 2011, you'll see a new number, but it will include the ones that have notified us that they're not in business anymore. And the 2010 figure already included the ones that came back, no longer at this address and that sort of thing. So really, your increase in businesses is that far column?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the development parts of the report then? Okay, well, thanks, so we'll maybe jump into water.
You bet. So, this report... You bet. So this report was, was put together in, in August in response to council's strategic priority, which was identified earlier in, in 2011, so. What I thought I would do is, is take a look at the water system right from source to, to tap, so to speak, on where we were, where we are, and where we're going as a community with, with water and water security. So I broke the report up into four different areas, which looks at supply and raw water storage, treatment, the treatment plant, distribution and treated storage in town, and then the final kind of part of the report looks at various studies that were completed over numerous years. So, and I, I should note too that this, this report, I would assume, is available to whoever would like to, because I'm not, certainly not gonna read it word for word, I'll just kinda hit some of the highlights. The, the source obviously for Dawson Creek is the Kiskatna, which is about eighteen kilometers west of the city. The headwaters of the Kiskatna is Bear Hole Lake, which is about sixty kilometers south of Dawson Creek, so gives a bit of perspective of, of the vastness of the watershed and where, where the water starts before it even gets to our intake. The Kiskatna obviously is a very drought susceptible river, it's a very turbid river. The river itself, at, at times, will see turbidity two thousand times what is recommended for raw water use for drinking water. So that just illustrates some of the challenges that we, we face right off the bat before we even take it to, to use it. We have a permit to withdraw from the Kiskatna that equates to about eight-hundred-and-seventy-five million gallons annually. So that's what we're allowed to take out, and the system was originally installed in nineteen forty-three from the Kiskatna by the US Army, so. Some of the projects that we've, we've undertaken in recent years on, on raw water, one is Bear Hole Lake weir. Two thousand nine, we, we installed a weir up there to impound some water to protect us from droughts. That weir holds back about two-hundred-and-fifty million gallons, plus or minus. The idea, if we ever got in a severe drought where the river was to run seriously low, we could open that weir and replenish the river. The Eris weir, right at our intake, was installed in nineteen ninety-two in a response to what was probably our worst drought ever. At that time, you could walk across the Kiskatna and barely get your ankles wet. Our intake at the River Pompouse was high and dry, and we had no ability to withdraw any water. So they installed the weir to provide a bit of a catchment area, and I believe they spent a good part of that fall opening up beaver dams up and down the river just to get some water to come down. And it should be noted that weir is probably in, in subsequent years, we've had drought years, maybe not as bad as that, but it certainly proved its value by, you know, holding that area of water. We have recently built a Hanson reservoir out by the River Pompouse that was constructed in two thousand and four. Holds about a hundred million gallons. The important aspect of that is not only the storage, but also the initial treatment that that provides for our system. We take it out of the river and, and by going into the Hanson reservoir, it has an opportunity to settle out, and what we've found is that has greatly improved the quality of the water coming into our treatment plant overall. We're able to manage a much more consistent water. Our treatment costs are down because of it. We don't have the fluctuations in turbidity. So that's, the storage is important, but that was another benefit that we realized. We have a number of other reservoirs, I won't get into that, that are existing, but the important one that I wanna talk about is, is our future raw water reservoir that we've kind of identified. We own some land just west of the treatment plant, we own a quarter section, and we, we earmark that for a future raw water reservoir. Potential capacity is about five-hundred million gallons. The addition of that reservoir in conjunction with what we already have would give us approximately one year's worth of water between the river and the city, and that really would be, I guess in its true sense, give us water security, because with a year's worth of water, we'd be able to, you know, get through probably any drought or any other issue with the river, and most importantly, get through a winter if we needed to, so. So that's something we've targeted, and we've started with the new water rate structure. We started putting money aside for that in a, in a reserve towards that reservoir, with the hope that we can build some money and possibly look at some partnering with different levels of government and lever that money into a project. We have a number of projects that were completed to increase our pumping capacity on the raw side. There's, the Eris Pompouse was completely redone, and the Deveraux Booster, and the Hanson Pompouse. All that was done in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, in response to the Water Quality Assurance Plan that was done a few years earlier, and it was targeting a, a rate of about three-thousand US gallons a minute, and that's what we've designed our system around, right from the source to the treatment plant as, as a target to, that we need to be able to pump and produce to get to town, to meet the demands. Some projects that we need to look at in the near future on the transmission side on the raw water is there's a, a main line replacement that needs to be completed between the heart reservoirs and the trail reservoirs. It's approximately eight kilometers long. It's an existing twelve-inch steel line that was installed. I think it was installed, it would've been originally back in the forties. In nineteen sixty-five, cathodic protection was installed on line to, to buy a few more years. That's been a while back now, so. Actually, the cathodic protection works very well, and we've had very few leaks on it, but we may be living on a little bit of borrowed time there as well, so. And it also is a bit of a bottleneck for our production rate that I mentioned, the three-thousand gallons a minute. We actually need to upsize that line a bit as well, so.
On that, can I ask, do we, do we do in-house or do we contract out for the pipe-to-soil rectifier tests that are needed for cathodic protection?
Uh, we contract that out, and I can't remember the company offhand, but I just recently saw that they, they come annually and inspect those and do that, so. On the treatment side, the water treatment plant, which is located just a few kilometers west of the city, it was originally constructed in the forties by the US Army, and the original building was replaced in nineteen fifty-eight to what is their, well, former, or, replaced in fifty-eight to the current water treatment plant building, but the current building's gone through obviously numerous additions and upgrades and renovations over the years. Some of the major renovations that were completed there were, nineteen sixty-six, we added second bank of filters that increased the plant's capacity. Seventy-five, we constructed the Longville Reservoir, which provides some emergency storage on-site, so if we have an issue between the raw water reservoirs and the treatment plant, say we had a main break, we have the ability to pull water from a reservoir on-site. Gives us a few days to fix the main line if need be. Two thousand and three, we added an additional filter bank that got us to the three-thousand gallons a minute that we've targeted. We also installed a large granular activated carbon filter. Two thousand and six, we installed the ultraviolet disinfection that takes care of any parasites. There has been obviously some found in the raw water, but we've never found any in the treated water, but this is just another level of protection that ensures that they do not enter our treated water. And more recently, twenty-ten, we had a, a grant from Townsford Memorial, and we redid the, the pump house for the Longville Reservoir, provided backup power generation, a few things like that, so. One of the major projects that's been identified for the treatment plant moving forward is, is a clarifier upgrade, just another component in there. It goes back to what I mentioned about the Hanson reservoir and that turbidity and how it's reduced our turbidity and provided a more consistent water coming in. The clarifier upgrade is, is we used to have two different types of clarifiers, and one was more apt to more turbid water, one's better for lower turbidity. Well, now that we have a more consistent lower turbidity water, the one's kind of rendered useless, and if we were to got the upgrade, so we have two similar, production would be a little better as well. On the distribution side, which we talk about distribution, which is from the plant into and within the community, city has approximately a hundred-and-forty kilometers of water mains that we maintain and look after. We have one treated reservoir, which is up at Park Hill. We have the shared reservoir that we, with Pooscoopy, the village of Pooscoopy, that was recently constructed, and we're planning for a future reservoir up in the old Laran site on the north side of the city to help meet the demands of the growth and all these building permits we talked about as things move to the north. Probably the most significant things that we've seen in the distribution side recently, obviously, was the Water Reclamation Project that's happening, and the key to that is that's going to take demand off our distribution system. When Jim spoke earlier about pulling ball collars off of water sales building, that's gonna have a direct positive effect on our distribution system, and so that's, that's very positive. Some of the projects that we've kind of faced in the future here for the distribution system is we need to look at a new water line from the Poos Reservoir back to the east side of the city to provide additional flows and fire flows for that industrial park out there. I talked about the reservoir on the north side of town and possibly a water line extension to the south side of town, south of one sixteen. That area needs, you know, as development will continue, it'll need an upgrade as well. The last part is studies, and I won't go through it all, there's, there's two things I wanted to highlight. One is a report done in nineteen sixty-five that I find very interesting, that they looked at other sources than the Kiskatna, and they looked at the Peace River and Pine. And even back in nineteen sixty-five, the report suggests that a possible weir at the headwaters and raw water storage were the most feasible and most logical to provide water security. So those are things that we, as a community, have, some of them we've completed and some we're working on, but interesting nonetheless, that very similar recommendations back then.
And we've had other studies done since nineteen sixty-five. They come up with the same result. It seems like every new council looks at this as an issue, and every single time it goes back to, we need not another water source, we need to work on the one we have.
There has been questions about groundwater. Two thousand and one, there was a groundwater survey completed, and they just found that in the vicinity of the city, there just really wasn't anything of any quality or quantity that was viable. Two thousand and three was probably the most important one, was when they looked at the possibility of going to the Peace River or Pine a little more in-depth. And, and when I say in-depth, more so than sixty-five, but still a very preliminary costing. They looked at, obviously, those two. They used, in the study, it goes as far to say is, we caution the city not to rely on these two preliminary estimates to make a final decision, because they were very preliminary. At that time, in two thousand and three, the preliminary costs to go to the Murray River was just twenty-five point eight million dollars, and to go to the Peace was just over twenty-five million dollars. Both options, the cost of power, energy just to pump and move the water was one point two million annually.
An increase of one point two million to the operator budget.
Just, yeah, and that again is in two thousand and three, and we know what costs in, in both construction and energy have done since then, so. So those are kind of the highlights, quick, and, but again, we've got the full report, if anybody would like it. I think there's some, there's definitely value. If they have any questions, they can always contact me as well, so. I'll answer any questions on this, and then I'll turn it over to Reg.
Thank you, Worship. And it might be a question that Reg will have to answer, I'm not sure. I'm wondering about the, the supply part of that, and behind the weir, do other companies and interests have water licenses above the weir on Lake?
On Bear Hole?
Okay. And if we opened the weir, how long would it take for the water to get to our pumps? And how is it policed that, I think we have first dibs on that water if we opened it. But if we did open it in an emergency, how long would it take to get to our pumps? And how do we police, who's drawing it quickly along the way?
Well, the first thing, looking back at last year, when we got into a situation, a drought situation, those permits were, were put on hold, and we weren't in a spot yet where we would've released the water. So I would say if we got in a position where we had to open the weir, that those same permits would've been on hold, so, you know...
Now, have, were the permits above the weir on hold at that time, or...
At, at Bear Hole or Kiskatna?
Bear Hole, I'm sorry, at Bear Hole, yeah.
Uh, that, Reg maybe will ask on, or answer on that.
That would impact us...
Is there any extractions on Bear Hole Lake?
Not at all.
Oh, there are no permits above the weir?
Above our intake on the Kiskatna, there is, but not on Bear Hole.
But not at Bear Hole, thank you, okay.
And also think it's, I mean, this gets looked at constantly, so we had the study last year, if you look, maybe it was the spring, 'cause time flies, but we had the World Water Day, and we had Geoscience and Gas Commission and Forestry, everybody came up, who's done all the studies. If memory serves, almost every study showed that we're only extracting approximately nine to ten percent of the available water in the Kiskatna River, which is why the storage is so important. It's not that the Kiskatna doesn't have water, it just doesn't have water when we need it.
That's right.
Because if you look at, you know, this fall or this spring, for instance, with the amount of water that ended up in the Hudson's Bay that went right past Dawson Creek, 'cause we had no way of capturing it and storing it. So that's, you know, every report that's ever come out has said, you know, there's enough water to sustain the community if we had the available storage, which is why it's really important that we look at that as we go forward, so. Am I somewhat right with that?
Well, yes, I think, I think the big challenge is, is in those intervening years before you get the storage. And if you had another drought system like you had last year where, you know, industry was restricted and other users were restricted, what does that mean? And so I think the real, really important part of this is making sure we have an understanding as best as we can of the components of that Montney Water Project, a study that was intended to look at groundwater, to look at deep water, to look at shallow, shallow groundwater and surface water. So I think I would be strongly recommending to council that they actually make a formal request to Geoscience asking about how they can further that work in the Kiskatna. The work that's come out to date on the groundwater components that the province did was not able to look at the upper part of the Kiskatna. At this point, I'm not sure what the other components are gonna release, but that is gonna be public in the next while. So that would be, I think, an important thing to move forward with, just to make sure that we know what we're dealing with. We know groundwater's an important part of contributing to our system, and in those low-water years, that's gonna be obviously critical. We also have Oil and Gas Commission reporting out on those volumes, so we need to formalize that working relationship so that we know, you know, what are the extractions and what is the, you know, when it comes to those pressure points, when you have to make, start to making a look at decision-making. I think getting down to these, what we call the sub-basins, is really gonna help us, as we do our project with UNBC, to, to know that maybe we have more pressure here and less pressure here in terms of actually trying to manage the supply. We're looking closely at One Island Lake, for example, where there's lots of groundwater wells being drilled, to actually partner with industry to monitor those levels. And so I think there's, there's interest in collaborating. As far as other collaboration with industry, we're looking at better climate data and partnered with ConocoPhillips to work with them at the Fire Weather Station up by the brassy plant, I'm sorry, the Noel Gas Plant to have winter snowfall data. So that's small but significant, because that's data that'll be online all the time to us and to other agencies. The, the other area that I, I think we need to really focus on, that I'm working on and have been working on, has been the idea of, in the area of, of water security, really is the idea of this inter-agency... the idea of this inter-agency agreement that we have, that was established a few years ago with all the Oil and Gas Commission and Environment and all these agencies. And I think there's a real need to maybe do a review of that agreement and what we can do to improve the levels of collaboration, information sharing, perhaps reporting out on different things that are happening out there. As you know, from the win, from this past summer, we had flood events, and I did the flyover of the watershed, so we did see a lot of infrastructure flooding and that type of thing. So we made a request to the commission to give us an update on what they got from the results from that, from those flood events, and any issues that we need to be watching for. And they've indicated they haven't got any, you know, response back from industry that should show any concerns with respect to our water quality. And I've also done my own assessments, you know, on different sites, and looking at hydrocarbons and that kind of thing, and haven't found elevated levels. We certainly had a lot more bacteria and parasites coming over in the system as a result of flooding. So these are the kind of things that, again, the role of the watershed stewardage is, can really help and to, to really build that working relationship. Having a watershed advisory group, I think, is going to be really valuable. Rod has, I think, worked over the years to build some of that connections, and I think a formal working relationship is going to be really important, so that we can get, keep people that are really knowledgeable to watershed, knowledgeable about their sectors and industry, and can really kind of keep things in perspective. There's always a kind of a view, as I think you were alluding to there, that, you know, there's this level of use, when in fact, the level of use may not be the issue, it may just, it may actually be issues around the actual development or the timing, or very local concerns. So I think having a local technical advisory is going to be a big help to us, so I'm kind of working on that. And finally, I just want to touch on this recent flood events. I was asked to, to come in and look at some sites on the Dawson Creek itself, and there has been previous work done by HEMRA on Dawson, and the Dawson Creek Watershed Society has looked at issues there. It's, it's something you don't pay a lot of attention until you, till you have a big event. And the flood event, I think, really pointed to, over the years, a real, I would say, lack of understanding of the whole system. You know, above the town, there's about 35 sections of land that is in the drainage basin, where there's been a lot of wetland storage up there, and that's been subsequently developed over time. And, and that is what is actually contributing to your event. So if you had another one of those events, you would see a lot of the same problems. The soils along the Dawson Creek itself are really what we call platy, they're like just packed. And when that water gets saturated, that you get soil slope creep, it's called. And so it, it, over 50 years, and some of the sites that we looked at are 50-year problems. So there are problems related to channelization, those, those oxbows that we call them, that's storage, and when you cut them off, the water just flashes through. So over a period, I think we can actually apply to, I've talked to the Flood Damage, Flood Mitigation Fund. They have a major fund through the federal program administered through the province that can look at larger flood mitigation works. And I would suggest wetland development, perhaps in partnerships with, you know, groups that are interested in that kind of similar objectives, can look at a project in the upper part of the watershed. And that'll help deal with it. The other issues then has simply to do with planning, keeping people away from some of these floodplains, not letting people do works without a proper understanding of the impacts, that's critical. You can't just jump into the creek and, and start moving slopes and channeling the river some more, because you're going to pass the problem along. And I know council's passed along those kind of comments earlier, and I think it's really important as people get to understand their little watershed, they still live in a little watershed, that they need to look care of. So, and the planning side, keeping the, you know, the zones protected away from the shoreline. That Ballaby Park area is a really good example. That strip should be at least 10 meters back, and there should be no heavy equipment or mowing, and that, let that restore. And, and we're actually going to now, we've brought in a consultant who's had a lot of experience in what's called soil bioengineering. So if you think of rebar as, willow is nature's rebar, that's really the idea, is you're actually restoring, you're, you're accelerating the process of natural recovery. And so an idea of doing different, different types of staking, it's called live staking, and we can actually restore some of these areas with different types of material. And so we've got a contractor that has been identified, that's expressed interest and willing to proceed with that, and an engineer that's worked with this soil bioengineering that's come out. So big rock and all that does not necessarily protect you when you get a slump and a slope, you could end up with all that material blocking the creek, and you got huge problems. So you want to be really careful on the steeper slopes, same thing with rotary. We have to restore that, and people need to be patient with that process of letting that part of that trail restore. And we can still have pedestrian, but we need to actually close off and restore some of that, that area.
That's, just for clarification, that's a trail just east of Brookside.
Yeah. So there's a number of those things that we're going to carry on with. I, I, you know, brought a copy of, of my report, you just, so you have that on hand. So we have a question, Marilyn?
Yeah, and just a short clarification from both of you. This idea of the users advisory group, where are we actually along in that? And what could the council do to, to further that along? I mean, what stage is it in now? Is there, are, is there a group that's formalizing parameters for themselves, or?
No, we, we haven't put out a formal call, and I really wanted to get direction, because it is something, I think, at a department and a council level, we need to really come together to understand what the best approach is. Do we want to do an invitation, an open invitation, or do we want to just allow me to select individuals that we think are, are recommended that have the, the knowledge in the background? I think there's sort of two levels to this. There's a sort of a policy level working and a kind of a technical level. And we did this with the Peace River Watershed Council years ago, and it worked really well, because we get those issues answered. We've got a new Oil and Gas Commission Director that's coming in, and there might be an opportunity for the council to connect with them, and perhaps with the Northern Health Authority and Environment to sort of say, let's give us an understanding of the status of our agreement and pick up on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you think we could maybe ask Calvin as, sorry, Calvin, Kevin, to, to advise us how we could, you know, develop a, as a council, support to move this forward?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll definitely need to have like more of a structured report with some options there, but Jim?
Yeah, so your worship, there is going to be a recommendation coming forward to you. We're in the early days of that yet, we're not ready to bring you that recommendation yet.
Should have learned again.
Any other questions from council?
Just Kevin's report is not in our package, but it's available upon request, is that?
No, it was in your, the water security report was received at your last council meeting? He's just hitting the highlights.
Okay, yeah, fine.
But it was in the opens, anybody can?
Yeah, that's my, that was my question.
Yes. Yeah, it's public document. Excellent, well, thanks very much for that. I know it was, you just touched on the highlights, as you said, as a lot of work put into reports, we appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Reg for coming in, too. And we have 15-6, report from Director of Community Services. Welcome back.
Welcome back. September came and went really quickly.
Yeah.
I highlight the, some of the department focused work that we've been following up on, and I'd spoken very briefly to the counselor, Marilyn, about the pesticide request, and both those are provincial, and, and she's also been doing some additional work, so we're fine with that, Councilman. Okay, the initiatives, one that's quite interesting is an initiative that staff have been working on at, at the Encana Center, the pool, and working with Lindsay at the Encana Center, is a collection of how we can utilize the collection of the Bottle Depot opportunity, and in turn partnership that back out into the community for some of our lower income or those in needs programs that we, we run. And this is a great opportunity, although it may seem small and financial, it's, it's incredible what that staff can do with a couple thousand dollars. And even as recently as this morning, staff is looking to volunteer to, to work some 50/50 at the Rage Games and turn those dollars back into, to this type of sponsorship. So it's, it's, it's very easy when you can then take those, go back out in the community, work with, with our clubs within the community, that those dollars start to roll and benefits are seen throughout the community. A number of activities, as most knew, our pool was closed down for its renovations, and a number of activities happened there. But one of the most important things I wanted to highlight was what we've been doing with our staff and rebuilding of staff around some of the training and leadership models that have been happening. And all indications that we partnered in regards to having heavy union involvement with that and, and understanding of how some of that leadership was going and very well received. It's a very busy time as we go from the summer months into the fall, and a number of our programs are up and running and are highlighted within, in the package. But a couple things to, to see is that we're, we continue to work on the climbing program, and there's a Tuni climb on November 11th, and as well, they introduced the, the climbing wall through the community registration night, which was, was quite popular. A number of our programs are for the fall are maximizing out, which is a credit to the community in regards to people engaging in participation. Some of the special events coming up, the, the pool is hosting a Halloween Spooktacular event on October 30th, a Tuni climb on November 1st or the 11th, and in regards to our seniors' participation, every Wednesday, a tea and a swim, which is very well attended and seems to be a highlight for a lot of the seniors that are, are attending. Some of the work is well highlighted in our partnership with the Northern Lights College, and some of the work in introducing students to our, to our area, and certainly was well taken by the students. Just, it's just nice to know of the number of activities, particularly around our Leisure Service Guides that, that highlight numerous opportunities for recreation participation. Our U18 National Women's Program is only, almost coming up to a year away. We will have two staff attending the Saginaw Workshops, or basically meeting with Hockey Canada staff and working with the Saginaw Working Committee on allowing this opportunity to, it's, it's almost like a traditional cross-sharing of information and tournament updates, and they have a number of meetings lined up while they're in Saginaw with Hockey Canada staff, including Mel Davidson, which should be quite exciting for Mel's input to that. The Terry Fox Round, as, as usual, is a success, but like anything, sometimes needs to be retwicked and will be reviewed by Erin within the department. And a number of things happening, again, a credit to Erin, she, she, single-handedly working, took on the Healthy Workplace Month and has had a lot of success, certainly with that. And Leisure Guide, it's that time of year again that we're collecting and putting that together. And I would be amiss to think that weather has been beautiful in the Peace, but just around the corner is the tree light up, so November 18th, and it's not all that far away, but it's that time of season. So with that, I'll, I'll open up for any questions that we may have. I, I thank staff, I, I took a, a long overdue 30th anniversary trip to Hawaii, and staff did a great job while I was away, and, and it was all appreciated to know that we've, we've put people in place that can handle that and did a great job while I was away.
Perfect. I also want to thank you and staff, but the partnership we had with Success by Six, because we have the new playground inside the entranceway of the Cambork Aquatic Center, which was nice to see, and also put out probably a public thank you to Commander Josie Biak for all of her help with, you know, she volunteers her time, I understand, to come up and do all the training and certification for our staff and others in the community for the climbing wall, which is a huge asset.
Certainly to have that connection with Commander has been extremely, like, she is by far, you know, within that top percentile of trainers across the country and well-respected, and it's, it's, it's been a bit of a slower process, but it's growing, and that's how you have to do, and more and more families and more and more parties are happening, and we're, we're quite excited with that.
Yeah, excellent. Councilor Sherman?
Hi, Barry. So I see the, you've had your first committee meeting for the U18 Hockey Championships. Do you have all the volun, do you have everybody you need? Are you still looking for people to join that committee, or are you all good?
I think the key, the key people are in place, and thank you to the members in the community that have come forward. We'll have an update once Shontay and Tara get back from the national championships coming up, and outline that and introduce what that committee looks like. I think as we get closer, the, the fact that we're very fortunate that this partnership is working with the Encana Center, there were so many things that that center brings to us in regards to marketing, the ticketing, the event, the fact that we have four relatively or brand-new hotels only a block away. Dustin has done a great job in regards to securing accommodations to date, that, that whole opportunity around transportation, the banquet. So a lot of the key factors are in place, how we're working in regards to that marketing with media. We've got some very key people in the community that have stepped to the plate. How we grow and develop the game and the legacy of the game has been very important, how we work with BC Hockey as we move forward, and certainly we, we did an event, every day we're always looking to how we grow the game for females and long-term longevity of the game for girls, to entry level right up to being a mother or just an older individual that might just want to strap on skates and have fun for the first time.
Thanks, Barry.
Excellent.
You looking at me?
You could certainly come out and help us.
You said older, and then you looked at me.
Might do better on blades.
Eh?
You might do better on blades.
That's right. So any other questions, Senator? Marilyn?
Coming out of the airport strategic planning sessions, I'm just wondering if it would be possible to partner with Central Mountain Air, maybe one of the oil companies would supply the money for it, to put the recreation catalog in the, in the plane seat pockets. I've traveled back and forth on there with a bunch of the young guys coming up, and they had lots of questions, everything from a map of the town. We give that to the old companies, but we don't give it to the people who are hired. So if you look into that, that'd be just great.
I think that's something, that's an excellent idea that should be done. We can easily do that, for sure. Okay.
Okay, well, seeing no more, thanks so much.
Perfect.
Barry for coming in.
Okay, great, thank you.
What's up, Derek?
We have BC Transit. So we're going to take a couple of minutes here to recess. I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation, part of committee, the whole, around BC Transit and their new.
And then the in-camera.
What's that?
And then the in-camera.
And then the in-camera, yes, so we'll just get a few minutes here, just to get set up for the next presentation.
You're doing it. That's it.
And you have much to add?
15-7, so, good morning.
Good morning to you.
So invited you to, I believe you have a presentation, and we're going to be discussing here with council on BC Transit. First of all, thanks for coming in. Again, it's really appreciated. I think it's really important for the community and for council to have a good relationship between the systems. And I know after this, you're going to be going, doing a presentation at the seniors' hall, and going to stakeholders out there as well, so thanks for doing that, and I think it's really important to have that community engagement, but I know you brought forward a, a PowerPoint to kind of give us some insight to the community involvement or sessions that we have in the north.
Yes.
So thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for giving us the opportunity just to report back to you on the work that we've done over the past couple of months, and specifically culminating with the recommendations in this report. Before I like to start, I'd just like to introduce myself. I'm Johan van Skak, I'm currently still the Regional Transit Manager for Dawson Creek.
Pretty much the rest of the province.
And I would like to introduce to you in the back row, Todd Dupuy. He is a new Regional Transit Manager in BC Transit, and he will ably take over a number of the systems in the north. So we will be working, I will be working with him to transition this to him. Secondly, I would also like to introduce the operating company, the manager, Harold Westwood. Harold has been instrumental in working with us in developing options that, that we will work with, just in terms of him being the eyes and the ears on the ground. So it is important that we, as a team, collectively bring forward what we believe is, is, is required for the residents of Dawson Creek. So if I fire away, let's just start a little bit of background. In November of last year, we were requested to implement some improvements to service the driver house development, and in so doing, we implemented in April of this year, we implemented service to driver house by serving it with two routes, the north side and the south side. We actually increased a little bit of service to be able to service the Canalto School area as well. And upon investigation and some analysis, we recommended to eliminate the, the, the then Route 3 multiplex route, just simply because it was unproductive, and it was quite a lot of duplication of service. The result of, of those changes reduced annual service hours 9,300 to 6,800. And the implication of this service change really can be summarized in, in, in one sentence, is that the service changed from a one-seat ride to rides where a transfer is required on certain trips. And that was, that was a, a serious change in this, in, in the system. And the impact of that resulted the impact of that resulted in the city, BC Transit and the operating company receiving quite a lot of complaints, a lot specifically from seniors. We then in response to these complaints undertook a public consultation exercise in May and we also posted questionnaire on the website. We received 58 responses but also what we did was we conducted interviews with riders on buses, notably, notably school kids. And summary of the issues and the concerns that were identified, I've just listed over there, is really the increase in trip time that was primarily due to transfers or poor transfers and these transfers aren't always that seamless due to early or late buses. Seniors mentioned to us loud and clear that they were having difficulty to get to and from the Co-op Mall due to circuitous routes as well as a reduced level of service on 13th Street and from students we heard really that their trip home in the afternoon had become long also because of transfer issues. The objective of the service review then is summarized in four points is really to address the issues raised by existing riders as a result of the service changes and then also to whilst we added to review the needs of the different transit markets to identify system improvements that could be made whilst we were busy with that. And then thirdly is to work with the operating company to see what we could do in terms of improving financial efficiencies in the system in the longer term. The review really focuses on both short and medium-term improvements. In the short term, I think it's, it's clear that we address the needs of existing riders and importantly to regain the ridership that we lost prior to the service changes and in the medium term is to look a little bit further down the line in order to develop a sustainable system that will increase the efficiency of the system and provide more direct and shorter routes in order to, that serve destinations in order to attract new ridership. Little bit of the system analysis based on the surveys that we undertook, 58% of the respondents were, were under the age of 60. The primary trip purpose was work and shopping but I should stress that students were, were very much understated due to a low response. Major destinations were cited as the two malls and Walmart. Primary reasons for using transit would be convenience and the saving of money and better service requests, those relate to, as, as we can all understand, better and direct faster trips, improved scheduling on the system, the potential of having a longer service day perhaps early morning or later in the evening and trip, increased trip frequency as well. Hello. Gone two slides, I'm sorry. A little bit on the senior service, they comprise about 40% of the ridership. Their purposes are primarily shopping, medical, social, et cetera. And the impact of the recent, recent changes on them was really fewer direct connections between the destinations such as the malls and the multiplex and Walmart and then obviously the reduced number of trips that travel, travel via 13th Street and that was, in terms of that, it was also mentioned that because of those reduced trips, there's often a lot of crowding on those trips with students. School services, we got a little bit more information outside of the survey through fair product statistics and driver interviews or rider interviews rather and identified about 40% of the ridership as students. And with a two-bus system, the challenge is always to meet the needs of students and other users at the same time when school is in session or when, when the school bell goes, so that's always the, the challenge. And as I mentioned, students identified long trip times due to unsatisfactory transfers, especially in the afternoon. Then just quickly on ridership, in Dawson Creek ridership and therefore rides per hour is lower than comparable systems in the province. Dawson Creek currently is showing 15 rides per hour and comparable systems, comparable in terms of size, is in the order of 18, 19 rides per hour. Some of the reasons for lower ridership summarized as really there's a low proportion of users traveling on transit for commuting to work. We currently have the situation of circuitous routes and long trip times and that obviously favors the use of the private vehicle and we have to deal with harsh winter conditions and that also favors the private vehicle. So there are a couple of challenges that we, that we have to address. Existing system structure, I'll just go through this very quickly. I think everyone is aware, we've got two routes, north side and number two is south side, the green one. Trips meet at the Co-op Mall, that's where transfers take place, so if you're in the north and you wanted to travel to the south and you wanted to get to the multiplex, you would have to transfer and vice versa. Route 2 does that little dotted deviation when, for school bell times and that's where it then, excuse me, would route by the, by the, by the schools and the senior center and pick up seniors on that 13th Street corridor and as I said, those that, there aren't currently many trips that route there, so, so the level of service has really gone down. Advantages of the system really is coverage, coverage is reasonably good, their walking distances are acceptable and frequency is acceptable as well, the number of trips that are provided. And driver house is still, well driver house is served by two routes, that's an important one. Disadvantages of this, obviously long trips, indirect trips, poor connections and certain transfer challenges at certain times. So on to the proposals. As I mentioned, our proposals consist of focusing first on, on short term then on medium term and then as I've said, short term really addresses the needs of existing riders and regaining ridership that we've lost. Medium term, that really is looking at how can we develop the system to improve its efficiency, provide direct two-way routing to destinations that are, that imply shorter travel times in order to attract new ridership. But here's, here's the important part, evolving from the short term to a medium-term system impacts the way in which transit is delivered. And in the following slide, I've just provided a couple of simple little diagrams, if you could bear with me, that just show really the, in layman's terms, how it works. On the left-hand side, there we've got a one-way loop. You can see it starts at A and it goes around in a clockwise direct back to A. So traveling from B to A or A to B is relatively, relatively straight and relatively direct. Traveling from C to A is also relatively direct but traveling back from A to C is actually the problem because you would have to go dipsy-doodle all the way around to get back to C. So really, this service model is an inexpensive way to serve a large area but it's not attractive for people who value time. If we then move to a two-way system where we serve the same kind of area but in order to serve it with direct two-way routes, we have introduced a second route. So if I'm on the blue route, A to B, B to A, C to A and A to C, all of those trips are nicely and they're nice and direct. However, if I need to get to other areas in the system on the orange route, it looks more brown to me but orange, you would have to obviously transfer and as you can see there are two spots where you could transfer, one right at the top, the little brown block and then towards the bottom, another brown block where the blue and the orange meet. So really, this model is more expensive because it requires more service per corridor. However, the advantage is we can attract passengers who value travel time. So that's just the, the principles of these two service delivery models. So option one, it's a short-term restructuring. Really what we do there is we, we have as the objective is to stabilize ridership and regain ridership. We retain the loop alignments but we do address connection times to improve transfers between routes, to minimize travel time and to ensure that we provide improved levels of service for seniors and others along 13th Street. In order to do that, we add a third route back into the system, let's just call it number three central for now because it does serve the core area, we'll get to a map in a sec. And really what we provide on that service is more, on that route is more service between 13th Street and the malls and it reduces the, it will help to reduce the time between transfers at the Co-op Mall especially for students when these people transfer from, from Route 1 and 2. And you'll see in a bit that service between Co-op and Dawson Mall is now two-way. Sorry about the color, it is sort of the orangey one that we're looking at but if you, the Route 3, it starts at the Co-op Mall and it travels south to Dawson Mall and then it travels west to 13th Street and then it does the loop in a clockwise fashion, traveling back to the hospital and then back to Dawson Mall and then up to the Co-op Mall. So really what we have there is we definitely provide more service between 13th and the malls and, and service between the two malls now also becomes direct as well, that's an important one. For Route 2 in the south, the green one, we've retained a lot of the existing routing but what we have proposed is two things, that we alternate service going into the Canalta School area in the west and going into the casino and multiplex in the east. And the reason for doing that is really just to be able to maintain running times because it's important that all these trips, we need to work very, very carefully to make sure that duration of trips is such that they all meet up at the mall in order to have efficient And then Route 3, well we spoke about Route 3, again I should just point out with this, we still service driver house with, with two trips. Something I would like to point out here because we explicitly looked at that, because that was brought to our attention by the mayor as well as by Harold Westwood, is access to the college and the casino and the multiplex. We have looked at this and investigated this and we do recommend that we keep providing access to both the college and the casino to go in because they have an access route and they have a proper turnaround point. But what we have proposed for the multiplex is not to go into the back of the multiplex to the back door where the swimming pool is, simply due to two reasons. One is safety because of vehicular contacts in parking lots that sometimes can be busy and cars back in and back out and so on and the last thing we want to do is have a transit rider knocked down. So what we are proposing is to actually locate a bus stop very close to both the front and the back door of the multiplex, more or less on the corner of 4th and 122nd Street and we also recommend the installation of a bus stop just because of the, the weather conditions.
Shanti.
I meant it, Shanti, I beg your pardon. Thank you. And then in a summary, advantages and disadvantages, the advantages obviously being a wider cover area, coverage area, increased frequencies, shorter walking distances, it works well for seniors, it works well for students, we've got good service to driver house. We have better access for seniors to the south where they have to, which needs a, which needs a, a transfer. In essence, we are retaining the existing system structure and there is in the, in the scenarios in terms of the, the size of service hours, we have the opportunity to expand service either earlier or later or a little bit of both, but we'll get to that in a minute. Disadvantages, obviously we keep our circuitous routes and we have, we still have long, long and indirect trips, obviously more hours to deliver the service and although we are planning for good transfers, obviously service reliability can affect that. Moving on to option two, this is our medium-term option which really focuses in on promoting ridership growth and actually using two-way routes to do that. In essence, we simplify existing routes into shorter direct routes to the major destinations. Thereby, we reduce trip times and that improves the attractiveness of transit and people willing to make the move to move from other modes of transport to transit. We call them choice riders. And then hopefully through this, we would attract new ridership and then obviously overall improve our efficiency of the system. And as I mentioned, design, there's a significant change in the design going from the loop, the loop model to the two-way model because loop, the loop model has been in Dawson Creek for many, many years. And the other point to note is that when one improves efficiency, you obviously impact coverage, so therefore you reduce coverage of the area and that leads to increased walking distances. That is the downside. So that is what it looks like. On, in, in the east, let's start in the east, we've got, call it the east side route, it runs north-south pretty much. It's that sort of brownie route, starting in the north, coming down 8th and then it, then it deviates over to 13th, to the 13th Street corridor, I think it's along 102, to the 13th Street corridor, to the hospital, then back to 8th and then south. Essentially that can be considered the, the, the main corridor and the nice thing about that route is probably we'd find that it'll minimize transfers because the major destinations are located on that corridor. If we look at Route 2, the northeast, the, the green one, it runs really service from the northeast down to the Dawson Mall and, and, and obviously services 13th Street so there's a second route running in, in 13th Street which is, which is, which is a good thing. And this is essentially to provide service to Walmart and the multiplex. And then Route 3 is the south side route, so it provides service to the south of Dawson Creek and that, that provides direct access to the casino and the multiplex. So that's in essence what that does. Advantages and disadvantages, obviously more direct routes and shorter trip times. It's easier to understand, the likelihood to attract new riders is high and it most definitely is faster trips for students where much better service for seniors. Disadvantages, obviously we reduce the coverage area, more hours are required to run these routes and obviously more stops because of more walking and two-way service, you would require additional stops and bus stops to, to provide that service or remove that service. And as I mentioned, it's significant change to the existing system and that can result in issues for some riders. So if I then quickly go through some service profiles, if we take those two options that we developed. And we just look at levels of annual hours of service and see what we could get out of it, just to give a flavor of where we need to go and we need obviously to work on this a little bit further, this is a first stab in terms of this, this is something that we can obviously refine a little bit. But essentially the service profiles provide us an indication of obviously annual service hours and then relate that in terms of the number of trips per day and the length of a service day. We've identified three scenarios, 7,000, 8,000 and 9,100 annual hours, just as, as, as an order of magnitude and it should be noted at 9,100 hours, that returns Dawson Creek back to its pre-April 2011 service levels. The cost and estimates that we have in, in this section also are high-level estimates and obviously we'll do the detailed calculations once we develop the detailed schedules. So there are a lot of numbers. The first table really shows the options down the left-hand side and across the page, the three routes. And we start with existing service and you can see in weekday, we've got 19 north side trips and 20 south side and obviously nothing on Route 3 because it's not in existence. Then we did, for, for option one, we developed three levels, 7,000, 8,000 and 9,100 hours and then we got option two at the bottom. Now if you look at... Now, if you look at the the base, seven, eight and nine thousand hours, you can see the number of trips on routes. And maybe we could just focus in on weekday for right now. But obviously, we are down from what we had in existing service because service is now being provided on route three. And route three, that little part of the table, needs to be read with the route three portion on the second table at the bottom in the round, route three, that gives service length of day rather. So you can see the number of routes, we go from at seven thousand hours, nine, nine, nine trips a day, but that only runs from nine fifty to three, three in the afternoon. For eight thousand hours, we can up that twelve trips a day and the service day is a little bit longer, going to five o'clock in the afternoon. And then on in nine thousand one hundred hours, we go twenty-two trips a day and that makes for quite a long day, it goes from nine twenty to eight fifteen. So really, what this table, oh, and let's just quickly talk about service option two. For option two, really, we didn't even explore the seven thousand and eight thousand scenarios because simply you need nine thousand hours minimum to provide that service in order to have an hourly frequency. Less than an hourly frequency is not acceptable. So that just gives you a brief quantification of how do these hours stack up or stack up in terms of providing round-trip service and what it can do to the length of the day. We we've specifically looked at the later part of lengthening the day towards just as a proposal over here, lengthening the day in the evening, just in terms of maybe there is opportunity to identify new ridership markets, you know, just due to the drinking and driving enforcement that's been happening the past couple of months so that people have the opportunity to do outings as well. The the counterargument to that is, well, maybe we should be looking at earlier service to address the commuter market. So those are two things that I think we will still be thinking of in terms of when when we do the final schedules to see to which extent can we do them or perhaps do them both. But the other thing we can also do is we can, if it's if it's later service, we can identify that as a pilot project that we'd run for a six-month period, see how it goes, let's count riders, let's count revenue to see whether this is something that we want to pursue in the longer term. Financial implications. First of all, costs are based on the current AOA, Annual Operating Agreement. As I mentioned, we worked with a parent company of the operating company to identify a hundred and fifty thousand fix cost reduction annually. That is based basically on reductions in administrative fees and management fees. And these savings will go in effect the first, the beginning of January next year, regardless of the service choice that is made by this council. And the bottom line is that at a nine thousand one hundred level or expansion, the the impact, the cost impact to local taxpayers is almost negligible. It's it's an increase of two thousand three hundred hours, a thirty percent lift in service and yet with 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 very little impact on local share. On the next slide, I've got a table that just gives that, you could follow the the green line, this table's in the report as well. But you can see first column, there's our existing AOA and the net municipal share of the city of Dawson Creek, once we back out revenue, is five hundred and ninety-three thousand odd. And if you go across the table to the last column, scenario three, you would see five ninety-eight is the bottom line, so it's a difference of five thousand dollars.
So that's scenario three in option one?
That's, no, I I'm comparing existing service versus scenario three.
Yes, but you're right, that's in option one.
Yeah, that's in option one. No, that's in existing service.
Nope. You've been calling option one, the returning to the ninety-one hundred hours with the route changes you've talked about, the service route.
Yes, I have, but just to be clear, the the first column is existing service, so I'm comparing existing service with a higher scenario.
Yes.
With the ninety-one hundred hours.
Of any option, because the both, both option one and two have nine thousand one hundred hours. Yeah. This is a very good news story in that we have the saving which makes this impact. Secondly, it's gonna it's gonna affect a reduction in the cost per hour. Cost per hour, as you can see in second last line, goes down from eighty-eight bucks to sixty-five bucks, which is a healthy decrease. And then obviously, I don't have it on the slide, but there would be an improvement in the cost recovery of the system as well. At the moment, the Dawson Creek cost recovery is eleven percent and there is no opportunity to increase that. And in and and hopefully, or I shouldn't say hopefully, I am confident that in in improving service and increasing ridership and regaining ridership, that obviously the cost recovery will even continue further. So I think that that's that's good and 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 it is important to note. Just a brief analysis on these two options. One, which is the short-term thing, we address complaints and introduce additional improvements. Maybe long-term service is going to be restricted due to the long routes. It's a difficult system to adapt, to change when development takes place in the city because you would really have to make wholesale alterations to these big loops loops or relocate service completely. And as I said, a nine thousand one hundred hour level can can provide a longer service day, whether it's earlier or later or both. And most importantly, addresses the concerns of seniors and students, we heard that loud and clear. Option two, which is the medium term or the option in the longer term, we address the shortfalls of one-way loops, we provide direct service, thereby shorter trips and and we should be attracting more choice riders. In other words, riders that have other alternatives. At a nine thousand one hundred level of service, that is what we propose, if 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 this option is chosen, that is the option we recommend in order to provide hourly service. Lower than hourly service is not really a viable alternative. This is very easy to expand to accommodate service, but this option does have negative effects, which include in reduced coverage and longer walking distances to bus stops. Finally, couple recommendations. We recommend the implementation of option one at nine thousand one hundred hours to address existing concerns and stabilize ridership. That we undertake a public consultation exercise to inform the public of these changes, that we would post maps and schedules at senior center and all the schools, senior homes, et cetera, and other and and other spots in the city. And that we actually provide a sneak peek of these changes, maps and detailed schedules on websites and if we needed to post that information at, for example, at the senior center, then we most definitely do that. And I'd like the council to guide us if you feel strongly that we need to come up again and really interact with them because we found with open house that we had in May, June, one of the two months, really worked very well. It was really nice for people and people, many, many people came up and said, thank you for seeing the face of transit, oh, this is BC Transit, I didn't thought they existed, that kind of thing. So we could do that as well. But I think it's important to not just roll out and just say, tell people where there are going to be some service changes, let's make sure the the correct information goes to stakeholder groups and that they understand the service before it starts. And then the third recommendation really is a little bit of a longer-term recommendation that later on in 2012, we propose to actually conduct open houses to obtain input on option two that we have put forward. In order for us to really prepare a robust, long-term structure that incorporates future growth, we will obviously supplement that with open houses and online surveys as well. And very importantly, that we work with city staff to ensure that the future development goals of the of of the city are supported by transit. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my presentation.
Thank you again.
So your worship. In order to consider this, what you need to do is resolve out of your committee, the whole back to your regular and someone move the recommendations. Johan will answer any questions you have. You had the report in your package, Johan's done the presentation, please direct any questions to him because there's no way in the world I can answer.
Sure. So we'll start the motion, go past twelve.
Go move.
Adam, Sherman, all those in favor, vote carried. Got that, Terry?
Yes.
Excellent. And then, so the official motion, go to committee, hold back into regular portion of meeting. So we got councillor Delik and Kenny this time, all those in favor, vote carried. So in the regular portion of meeting, so I look to council then, so first of all, if you've heard enough to formulate this motion and if you have questions, as Jim said, you have to defer. So councillor Sherman.
So I would I would move this recommendation that we implement option one, the ninety-one hundred service hour level, undertake the public consultation exercise to inform the public and conduct open houses in 2012 to obtain public input to prepare long-term transit structure that incorporates future growth in the system.
Okay, second by councillor Delik. And question?
I'll give one brief question. You talk in the options about servicing the casino and the swimming pool in Cana Center and am I right in seeing that service stops at six-thirty in the evening and and that's a concern to me?
Let me just grab the map if I may.
Yes, what you're suggesting is it will go till nine at night.
Yes, where, do we see that up here? I'm sorry.
No, the service does.
South side.
Yes, south side does continue on the ninety-one hundred hours. It starts at seven in the morning and it goes until nine o'clock at night.
Okay, I'm sorry, lead me through this, then how do you get back home to the north side at nine at night?
That is a good question, that is something we will work on to iron out those details.
Thank you.
That that that's a very good question. When we do the detail, you see what I what I did just to get these numbers, I just wanted to make sure that what I present to council today is realistic and make sure our numbers are in the ballpark in terms of not just money, but in hours and service day and frequencies and so on.
I have to say, reading the report, it was very clear and and well put together, thank you for that, very understandable, but yeah, I just wondered if.
We would we would definitely, that has to be addressed.
At the moment, that bus goes till seven at night and we have had some complaints, but not many about that. The bus, the south side route runs till seven and I think maybe two, three percent of our complaints have been about that. Overwhelmingly, the complaints have come from the core area with the seniors and students which are being addressed by this option.
Yes.
I just thought for future ridership, that's a young area up there and then kids might start being able to come on their own and use the center in the evening if that was.
Yep.
Yeah, getting home is definitely important.
Yeah, once the pool closes, does it close?
Depends on the night.
Yeah, but.
And what's scheduled, isn't it?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Anyhow, they.
Okay, any other, any other questions at this point? I know this presentation, I'm not sure if the full one will be presented to the seniors here at one o'clock.
Assuming you adopt the recommendations. And of course, all council is invited to come along with Johan and Greg for that. Johan, Todd and Greg is representing us.
Okay. And we might be a little late, it looks like, but we have the time. Any other questions? Okay, so all those in favor then, let's carry.
Wonderful, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So if you resolve now to go to closed, we'll feed the transit folks outside and we'll have a working lunch with the chamber inside.
Hey.
Yes, we'll have the chamber stay.
Oh, that's food?
Okay, so a motion, the recesses, the bank. Councillor Sherman, councillor Fad, all those in favor, carry, take all the posts, you're carried. So we're going into the close. Thank you again.
Thank you for having me.
Great.